I'm here, Mayor.
Okay. I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 23, 2021, at 6:30 PM. As you know, we received an email from Commissioner Tera Penny. He's requesting to participate in the BOC regular session and the CRA meeting via Zoom. I need a motion to allow Commissioner Tera Penny to participate.
Motion to approve to participate on Zoom.
Second. And roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lahusas?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Mayor Lahusas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiottis?
Here.
United vacation will be given by Reverend Melody Kidd. She is with the Crystal Beach Community Church. Following by the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Join me in prayer. God of all peace, we invite you to be present in this meeting. Give us unity of spirit. Help us have a listening presence. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for effective outcome. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively reflect on difficult areas and be solution oriented this evening. May we have a spirit of understanding in this room and work together on our shower, shared mission. I pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us in gracious fellowship. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic which stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to announce that item number 24A and 24B will be deferred to April 13, 2021. Regular session. The item number 12, which is for the Habitat for Humanity proposal will be deferred to undetermined day. Also, I'd like to remind to everyone, in order to have productive meetings with a professionalism based on the city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect, without a personal attack. And I want to thank you for your cooperation. And now we're going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Well, I may have some people waiting on the internet to donate some time to me. Mark, can you check that out? Mr. Jump.
If anyone is willing to donate time, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to give your name and address. And we do not have anyone with raised hands at this time.
Oh, we said we would trust. Didn't work out, that's fine by me.
You have four minutes.
Chris Fabowski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. At the last meeting, we got to say goodbye to our old police chief and say hello to our new police chief. And that brought up two important points to me. One is how important it is for either career employees or elected officials to end on a high note. Sure, they may do something, make a few mistakes here and there. But coaching, he got to go out on a high note. You know, there wasn't this scorched earth policy that some politicians, when they're termed out or career employees feel that, well, you know, there's nothing anybody can do about it. Only got a little time left, couple of years. You know, why isn't it the other way around? Why isn't it that we just say, hey, you know, we're on our way out? Why don't we do what the people want and really ramp it up at the end? Really do something important for the people. Something important for the city, instead of trying to help yourself or your buddies, whatever it is. The other point was I used to be an advocate of electing folks that grew up in Tarpon Springs. Because I thought that was important. They would never try to destroy the town they live in. However, again, the new chief talked about how he went off to New York and he got to learn the hard way, you know? How wonderful Tarpon Springs is and how he couldn't wait to get back here. But he'd go to New York thinking he wants to come back to Tarpon Springs and turn it into New York. It doesn't make sense to me. And then I thought, well, maybe, you know, I liked having youth on the board, but maybe they haven't experienced enough. Maybe they haven't lived in New York or other places that aren't Tarpon and in order to understand how important Tarpon Springs is. You know, we don't, we don't need high-rise buildings here. We need more green space. We need to preserve the kind of life that we enjoy. Not bring more and more and more people and more traffic into this town. We don't need that. Nobody wants that. We want to preserve the kind of life we have. That's why I moved here over 20 some odd years ago. And that's why most people move here. Because they're trying to get away from all that other stuff. And there's nothing wrong with that other stuff. Heck, I talked to the guy who works for the Morgan Group. He grew up in Palm Harbor before he moved to Miami. Well, obviously, he moved to Miami because he was into that. You know, big city, that kind of lifestyle. But he told me personally, he walked on that property, the Walmart property before they owned. Because people used to illegally go on their four-wheel and all that stuff. He obviously enjoyed that. And yet he comes back here from this Texas group, living in Miami, trying to destroy that property. It's just unbelievable. And that's the problem. Maybe some of these people on our board just haven't, either they want to move out of here, destroy this place and live somewhere else. Or maybe they just don't respect it enough because they haven't lived abroad. And so that's what we need. People that have been here long enough to respect this place and understand it, or have been elsewhere and know what a precious gem Tarpon Springs is. This is what we need. And we need the politicians and the career employees here to go out on a high note. To do what they can for the city and for the citizens, not for their buddies or themselves, none of this stuff. And whether you just, I don't know what it is, what's happened, what's been taking place. But something's got to change. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Jackie Turner, 792 Chesapeake Drive. I'd like to address two items. The first is item number 13 on the agenda regarding the Second Saturday Market and Shout the Docks event.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Sir?
This is only for the items will not be discussed tonight.
Will not. I apologize, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Next person, please.
Peter Lachas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Get your lace on, get your lace on, get your lace on. Before I start my readings and my basic comments, another tragedy has befallen us twice in two weeks. People gunned down mercilessly. So I would ask our city manager and our board, if possible, that we could send our new police chief, Young, to Colorado to represent Tarpon Springs. To let that community know that we're in support of them. And that something must be done to stop this insanity. We must do something to take these evil guns, these assault rifles, this military weaponry out of the hands of people who don't respect their power. And I heard a comment today that it's not just people protection, it's police officer protection. As you know, there was another police officer who was killed in this incident. So y'all looked upon it, think about it, and maybe we can do something about it. And for my first reading, Mica 2. 1 through 4. Woe to those who plan iniquity and to those who plot evil on their beds. At morning's light, they carry it out because it is in their power to do it. They covet fields and seize them and houses and take them. They defraud a man of his home, a fellow man of his inheritance. Therefore, the Lord says, I am planning disaster against these people from whom which you cannot save yourselves. You will no longer walk proudly, for it will be a time of calamity. In that day, men will ridicule you. They will taunt you with this mournful song. We are utterly ruined. My people's possession is divided up. He takes it from me. He assigns our fields to traitors. Coming in right by the front steps, there's some flags. One of them says Tree City. Tree City. Yet, this board approved a project to take out over 1,000 trees. The hypocrisy of that. On one hand, every Arbor Day, y'all bring a proclamation, oh, we're a tree city, we're a tree city. Yeah, you maybe give a few trees away. But in the meantime, projects come in and you take out hundreds and thousands of them. Psalm 75, 7 through 10. But it is God who judges. He brings one down, he exalts another. In the hand of the Lord is a cup full of foaming wine mixed with spices. He pours it out and all the wicked of the earth drink it down to its very dregs. As for me, I will declare this forever. I will sing praise to the God of Jacob. I will cut off the horns of all the wicked, but the horns of the righteous will be lifted up. Consider your actions.
Next speaker, please.
This is part of my presentation, so it shouldn't be an issue. Neither should the attorney be able to spin it in a way where anybody feels uncomfortable.
Just make sure you face the chair when you speak.
Boniotti's Coolas, 595 Penitence Avenue. Anybody donating their time is simply just donating their time for me to be speaking. These are all my own thoughts and expressions. Therefore, I will have my mother, Maria Coolas, Auto Biltris, who are online to verify Mr. Jump, and then Annie Samarcus, who will be donating her time.
If those online can raise their hand and they'll be allowed in to confirm. I'll bring the first one in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Maria Coolas, 595 Penitence Avenue, Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. I'm allowing the next.
Auto Biltris.
And we have Annie Samarcus. I will begin. Good evening, Tarpon Springs. I first want to start off with my, every once in a while, I take these walks down Bay Shore Drive. And I happen to come across the the F Kentrow Power Bridge. You know, one of those little commissioner monuments that I think we should probably get rid of some of those because it just glorifies certain commissioners over time for their so-called accomplishments. But I was reading it and it's a nicely, you know, little statue over there. Says the F Kentrow Power Bridge. 1977, Mayor Bill Lane, Commissioners James Jim Colianos, Charles H. Phillips, F Kentrow Powell, and John K. Tera Penny. And I thought to myself, I said, wow, what a time to be alive in 1977. But that's a story for another day. You know, I hope everyone had a great weekend. Tonight, I will focus on opening up the city for First Friday. I will ask the board to hold an emergency BOC meeting to open First Fridays back up starting April 2nd as a soft opening for the small businesses. It takes 20 minutes for an emergency meeting to accomplish this task. The weather is great. Florida is the sunlight of the world right now. The spring is blooming, but business is not booming in Tarpon Springs. Business owners are struggling and citizens want events. You know, I went and walked and I talked to most of the business owners down there in Tarpon Avenue. Actually, went today. All different business owners. I asked them, how much is it hurting you that First Friday is not open? And they said, really bad. It's gives them a lot of foot traffic. It helps them out with a big percentage of the overall amount of people who come in monthly. And I don't know why the city is taking so long to open these events. You know, spring rolls right into summer and historically, that's the toughest time of the year for all business owners. The city must open up special events and the buck stops at Mark Lacorice. But it really doesn't stop at him. It stops at the BOC. You know, I went to the Tampa Raptors and Utah Jazz game to watch an NBA game. And I was waiting in line to get drinks. And I saw this imposing figure walking up on me. And as I looked at them and I noticed I was taken back for a second.
Mr. Coolas, will I remind you, you're addressing the chair.
We are addressing the chair.
Facing this way.
Okay, so.
I'm going to remind you again.
Yes, sir. So as I see that, who do I see walking over towards me? Mr. Mark Lacorice. And I said, oh, my God, Lord, why'd you make us cross paths again just like this? I'm sitting here in Tampa and I come across him. And I just couldn't believe it. I said, hey, Mark. He looked at me, nodded at me, and went on his way. So it dawned on me. So I snapped a picture of him. This is the picture of Mark Lacorice, as you can see, in his Yannis Antetokounmpo jersey at a Tampa special event that was holding thousands of people indoors with air circulating. So I hope you guys all know where we're building up here. You know, the question is, what is the difference between having an NBA game with thousands of people and not having a First Friday with thousands of people for business owners? The answer is Tarpon Springs and its business owners lose out on revenue and the NBA doesn't. You know, Mark will support the pros, but not the hometown pros. Not all you business owners. You know, you see right here, he's out in the hallway, walking with thousands of people. What is the difference between thousands of people at First Friday? I can't. I can't come to that reasoning. So here we have Mark Lacorice telling the citizens and business owners of Tarpon Springs, they can have outdoor events in First Fridays. And here is our city manager attending a special event, NBA special, with thousands of people there. You know, maybe if we built a dome around downtown Tarpon Springs, make it look like a stadium, Mark Lacorice will then let us have special events. And you know this type of behavior, right? This is no different than California Governor Gavin Newsom. Do as I say and not as I do. Is it right for you business owners to be struggling? Is it right that other cities close by are having events? What is the holdup for us? And the rumor is that this decision keeps coming up being the final decision with Mark Lacorice. And the buck doesn't stop there. It's up to the people in charge of those events to apply for the permit to push it through. The city manager will present it to the board and the board will decide to have these events. This dictator mentality, but yet the hypocrisy in itself is not, it's not right for the citizens. And again, how is it safer for Mark Lacorice to attend an NBA game with thousands of people? But the citizens, merchants, and business owners can't have a First Friday. So I asked the board to hold an emergency hearing for the Merchants Association, April, for the April 2nd, First Friday, between now and March 31st. It will be a soft opening and a great way to boost community enthusiasm and help small businesses. We still have a couple of questions that need to be answered between Commissioner Seat Number 4. Mr. Tera Penny, you've been dodging the question along with George Andriotis. It's time to get it out in public, whether you guys have personally talked about any political aspirations together, even though you guys are supposedly running against each other. So we need to get that on the record. And one final statement. I wish David Banther the best. He's really a great guy. There was a couple of comments I wanted to make sure that I wasn't involved in regarding toxic behavior or family being drawn into anything. I've stated many times on public records, you can look it up, as well as to reporters here when I've sent emails. These men are great personal men, they're great family men, and I have nothing respect for them. Even Mark Lacorice will say, when I saw him at the Lightning game in the Section 300 years ago with one of my friends, how I saw him with his three kids and I completely ignored him. The same thing that just happened this Friday at this NBA game. So I respect everybody. Understand Tarpon Springs politics is a little different right now. But we want the best of the best to come in and devote their time for the best of the city. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Do we have any other public comments? You know? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
We have received one. And it is from Frances Blackland. And it's entitled Food Trucks. Due to previously arranged HOA activity, I cannot attend this meeting personally. Still hopeful that the Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners will reverse their stance on the current ban on food trucks, not only for events downtown, but also for incorporated neighborhoods in Tarpon Springs. We would love to help and support our local food truck businesses. Our HOA had a food truck night back in December and it was a huge hit. But now we are being banned from doing so again. I feel that this is discriminatory against said businesses and our HOA that only want to grow and thrive in the great city of Tarpon. Please consider a reversal on your position on this. We would love to have them back, support small businesses again. F Blackland, President, Lock Haven, HOA. And that is the only email.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. Do you have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
Anyone who's online who would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We are now going to the presentations. Item number one is the Library Advisory Board. This is the annual report, staff report, Mr. Lacorice.
I believe the library board will be making this report.
This is the Tarpon Springs Annual Library Report to the board. My first time doing this, so please be patient. My first time doing this, so please be patient. The mission of the board, pardon me, the mission of the library is to provide excellent library and information services, fulfill the needs of the users, enhance their quality of life, and be a focal point for the community. Bigger. Thank you. The library board members are Chairperson Eileen Scott, Vice Chairperson Patricia Hadad, Secretary Pat Lovejoy, that's me, Board Members Valerie Kulu, Sheila Hader Long, Tammy Walker, and Kathleen Kelly. Diane Wood is the Director of Cultural and Civic Services. Carrie Rupp Calvis is the Library Director, and Denise Manning is a member of the library staff. In order to provide for social distancing and better access, new safety measures were added in two thousand and twenty, including Plexiglas shields at all public service desks made by the City Public Works Department, hand sanitizers around the library, closing the library daily from one to two P M. for cleaning, daily temperature checks for staff, face masks for all staff and patrons, reconfiguring furniture and gradually adding more seating and relocating materials. Adapting to change in the COVID era, we have new and expanded e-resources. New resources include a new database of children's ebooks called Tumble. A database called Nish Academy that offers training for the public as well as for staff on topics like using business and genealogy databases. And how to use Zoom or Facebook or put Twitter. And patrons can now borrow more ebooks, audiobooks, movies, TV shows, and comic books through Hoopla. And music twenty-four seven through FreeGal. Starting in May two thousand and twenty, patrons could pick up materials at crib site and this continues. Staff create and post craft videos. Book Mouse is a craft picture right here. Other crafts projects include a button tree, no-suit pillow, and recycled wind spinner. Crafts to go are available at the library and this shows a picture of the craft stable in the library and they're available twenty-four seven. Oh, pardon me, whenever the library is open. Sorry about that. And this is our latest video of some of the various virtual activities. I think the library staff did a remarkable job with that. That was great. We have in-person services that were changed during the pandemic. Library staff helped patrons use the library computers to register for vaccine appointments, file for unemployment, search for jobs, and much more. The library distributes free masks for Pinellas County. And during the election, about five thousand ballots were dropped off at the library. Friends of the Tarpon Springs Library, the Tarpon Spring Christmas Parade was canceled due to COVID. But the Friends of the Library sponsored the December book giveaway at the library, which gave children a chance to still get a free book for the holidays. The Friends also donated thirty-five thousand dollars to the library in two thousand and twenty. Virtual programs, to-go kits, and special enhancements are provided by the Friends of the Library. Library Board Activities, the fine-free approach. The board voted to join other PPLC libraries to eliminate overdue late fines beginning in October two thousand and twenty-one. The American Library Association encourages libraries to go fine-free in order to provide access to users who don't have the ability to pay. But if resources are not returned to the library, but by the end of the grace period, the cardholder account is locked until materials are returned or the cost of the items is paid. And several libraries have reported an increase in usage after going fine-free. The library board is helping to put together a survey to gather community input on programs, services, and facility enhancements. The survey will be finalized at the April board meeting and will be posted on Connect Tarpon Springs shortly thereafter with paper copies available at the library. The board also works with staff to plan library projects, including a strategic plan for renovations and hopefully expansion of the library. For twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, the board will give input for programs and special offerings for the library's twenty-fifth anniversary. Special library collections and resources. Patrons can check out musical instruments, seeds from the seed library, games and puzzles, educational tablets, STEM kits, or pardon me, steam kits. The young adult or teen creative kits are the library's newest special collection. Resource guides are available for businesses, sustainability, early literacy, and trauma-informed topics. Library events such as Zoom trivia nights with music in March and movies in April. Sorry about that. And movies in April are advertised in the library monthly newsletter on the library website and social media pages. Greek genealogy programs for adults and Greek storytimes are coming soon. National Library Week is April fourth through ten. Oops. And finally, some statistics. The circulation of digital items has been climbing. And volunteer hours down here are from before the pandemic in two thousand and twenty. Thank you for your attention and spokenness as a regular person. I really love our library. It does so many wonderful things.
Mrs. Lovejoy, thank you for the presentation.
And thank you for having me.
And also would like to take this opportunity to thank the Library Advisory Board, the Friends of the Library, the volunteers and all the staff. You guys doing a terrific job there and also providing the the safety measures for all people that visiting the library. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Any commission comments?
Ms. Lovejoy, I think you did a great job in the presentation. Thank you for putting that together tonight and speaking to the board. Also, if you could relay also what the mayor said from the whole board that we appreciate all your services on the volunteer board. And I do agree that our library puts together a first class, a ton of different activities for the community. And I really love to see the dynamics that have adapted to the COVID situation over the past year. So thank you for the update. It's always great to see this each year. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commission Terrapini is online.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to congratulate the library on everything that they're doing, especially through COVID with the adapting and expanding of the e-resources and some of the other programs that y'all are putting together. And just historically and for the record for anybody sitting in the audience, I'm just, I just want to let y'all know I'm honored to have my my name as well as my family name right on the donor board when you enter the library. So happy that we could participate in that about twenty-five years ago. Thank you.
Mission Donovan.
Yeah, it's definitely been a challenging year, but you guys have done such a fantastic job of adapting to it. I mean, that video was was really top notch. It really, you know, well demonstrated the different activities and virtual classes that you guys are offering right now. So I just want to thank you not only for your hard work, but for your creativity throughout this past year to make sure residents are getting the best experience possible. So thank you and all the volunteers.
Commission Teckyoris.
Thank you, Mayor. The library is very important to me and I want to thank Ms. Lovejoy, Ms. Scott. I understand you're listening this evening. The Library Advisory Board as a whole, the Friends of the Library speaks always highly of what the library staff is doing. And and I know I live with the president of the Friends of the Library, so I get it firsthand. I very much appreciate the staff and the volunteers' efforts. They're always very friendly when we go in there. I do have a question. City Manager Lacorice on this elimination of fines. This can be done by you. Is that correct? Is this an ordinance change or anything that has to happen?
No, we'd have to look at it with this view. I'm not sure if we would need to or if I can do that. So.
All right. I think that's an excellent idea to eliminate the fines. I don't have an issue with that. Also very much appreciate reaching out to the public. I think that's an excellent way of doing it. I wish we could do more of that as well. There was a slide in there about expanding the services and facilities and I did. I had a conversation with Ms. Rupp Calvis this afternoon, or actually this morning along with Ms. Vincent. And the library is not anywhere to be seen in any of our planning documents. I know that you're doing a strategic plan. I commend you on that. I very much appreciate that. Mrs. Vincent looked at the comprehensive plan. It's not in there anywhere. And so the only observation I'd like to make is is with these planned changes and and things of that nature. If in the course of updating the comprehensive plan and making sure it gets fed into the strategic plan, it would be good to have the library included in there with the level of standards, the level of service, what we do, the size compared to population, so we can identify what the needs are. You're already undergoing that process and it would certainly help Ms. Vincent in updating the comprehensive plan. And then also with the strategic plan. It's just a way of commemorating or documenting what is desired to be done there. And also as far as the strategic plan, it would pretty much prioritize where it fits in with the overall scheme. So there isn't a whole lot of arm wringing and arm waving over arguing whether the library is more important, some other priority or the other priority is more important than the library that's already done for us. And I would very much appreciate that and streamline the process. I think that's it on the on the comments that I had. I think that's it. And then City Manager Lacorice, he can let us know on the administrative fines if there's anything we need to bring back forward. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We go to the public comments. If anybody has any comments, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. I hear none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on the side, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Lovejoy, thank you so much. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the satisfaction release of lease, liens. Number three is the attorney fees for Johnson and Junkson invoice seventy-four thirty-three. Number four is the authorized execution of agreement for Pauli Place for Tarpon Springs Community Center. Number five is the authorized execution of agreement for Pauli Place for Tarpon Springs Security Center. Number six is authorized execution agreement for stormwater upon construction and maintenance with Pinellas County School Board. Number seven is inquiries filed, single source purchase of Cal Flow Lime System Parts Services and Chemicals. And B is the award file number twenty-one zero one twenty-four, single source purchase of Cal Flow Lime System Parts Service and Chemicals. Number eight is the award file twenty-one zero one eighteen, single source purchase of corrosion inhibitor. Number nine is the award file number twenty-one zero one twenty, single source purchase of equipment, parts, and supplies and services for instrumentation. Number ten is approved change order. Number two, to bid number two zero 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 seven one, West Court Street improvements. And number eleven is the award file number twenty-one zero one thirteen, Remuneration. Any of the items which you'd like to pull?
Six.
Six.
Ten. Ten.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments of the items two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and eleven?
Yes, number eight. Christopher Boski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. So having toured the reverse osmosis plant, it still puzzles me that we have some of the purest water in the world created in our in our water facility. And yet we have to add toxic chemicals to that water to get it through these failing pipes and distribution lines to get to everybody's houses. At some point you have to address this. You can't go on like this forever. You know, I had a filter on the bathroom shower head and I removed that and replaced the shower head without a filter in it and it smells awful. The water not only tastes bad, but it smells bad. It smells like a chemistry experiment because that's exactly what it is. A constant adding a little of this, a little of that to find out which additives won't color the water, but will try to reduce the amount of lead and other things that leach into the water because of the pipes. You got four different pipes in this town. Old, old plumbing needs to be replaced. You might start with the schools because you might want those kids to drink some clean water and not have lead in their system. This is exactly what happened up in Flint, Michigan, only it's not getting the same kind of press. You're putting chemicals in the water to try and prevent, I guess, the pH level of the water. You create reverse osmosis. It's super pure. Well, you know, purity or a vacuum is a port, so it absorbs other things into it. Not to mention it's corrosive because of the pH level. But not to mention you add fluoride, which is also very caustic. And so it's eating away at the pipes. Some of these very, very old pipes are underneath our houses and they bring the water to our houses and this is not healthy for anybody. So you're gonna have to budget for this. At some point, you can't let this go on, creating pure water on one end and then toxic soup on the other. At some point you have to address it. You might start planning this out, fix the schools first. And then start figuring out where are the oldest pipes in town and how are we going to replace them? Maybe you do that PIP or whatever it's called, where they in place, they put in some PVC stuff in there. They just cut a section here, cut a section over there. They put this sheath in there and then they run steam through it. Creates a plastic coating inside. That's just one. There are many, many solutions to this problem, but it has to be solved. You know, children are going to drink this water. You know, unless you have a whole house water filter, it's a problem and it can absorb through your skin. So even if you're not drinking it, it's getting through your skin. I don't want this. Nobody in town wants this. And nobody wants to admit that they spend millions upon millions of dollars to get this RO plant in the town. And for what? What good is it? And if you go back to the reason why we had the RO plant in the first place, well, it's because swift mud. And the Army Corps of Engineers rubber stamped every permit for every wetland in town to get covered over with some crazy new development that was just gonna be a boon for the town, right? No, it destroyed the aquifer. It used to be that God would let rain fall down to the earth. It would go down into the earth and then we could get it for next to nothing out of the earth. And now we have to spend millions of dollars, tons of electricity to create this pure water. And then we create the purest water on earth and send it through filthy pipes and it's toxic. It can't stand. It's gotta be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Lacus, five one four Ashland Avenue. According to the backup, that's not back there again. From what I can recall, it's some kind of potassium or phosphate type chemical. As Chris mentioned, fluoride. You got chlorine in there. And then a few weeks ago, there was a consent item for lie. The same lie that somebody in Oldsmar tampered with a hacker and changed the levels that created an event that possibly could have injured or killed people. So right off the bat, I can name four chemicals being added into our water supply. And maybe Mr. Robertson can even share with us a few more that are in there that we're not as well aware of. This is sad. As Mr. Harbowski says, and y'all are all aware of, forty something million dollars for that water treatment plant. Forty-four, if I remember. Swift Mud gave us twenty. And we've got bonds outstanding that we're paying on for it. And I'm not even aware of what the costs are to change the cartridges if they get all clogged up. Something needs to be done to purify our water and quit putting all these chemicals in them. And if one of the solutions is fixing our pipes and our infrastructure, then so be it. And if that's the case, reach out to your federal representatives to quit stonewalling the infrastructure bill that Mr. Biden, President Biden, is trying to put out, which addresses some of these issues. He's trying to provide us, communities, money to solve these problems. Yeah, we got Mr. Scott, Mr. Rubio, Mr. Billerakis, and all the Republicans vote no on everything. Tell them to open up their eyes and the community needs this money to fix our water pipes and to help our infrastructure so we can get the clean water that we are producing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Panayotti School, yes, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. I wasn't gonna speak on these topics, but they both brought up the, the pipes and the sewers. And come April first, the new water sewer rates are gonna be presented to the board as Mr. Ron Herring discussed at the Budget Advisory Committee back in February. And the whole city's expecting cheaper rates, top to bottom. We already got higher rates of water waste rates across the county compared to others. We've heard time and time again of a ten to twenty percent premium that we are paying on that water and waste management. I'm concerned that we're talking about all the infrastructure with pipes and how we're not getting the clean water from this reverse osmosis plant to the citizens. So we need to really consider what's going on come April first. We need to make the decision that's gonna help all citizens, all businesses, everybody, top to bottom, on cheaper water rates. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on these items? Do you know? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
Anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other commission, any commission comments on these items? If not, the chair will retain the motion.
So move.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticius?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Malahouzis.
Yes. Item number six, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, my only, thank you, Mayor. My only question on number six is, I just noticed at the end it mentioned that the Pinellas County School Board was meeting earlier today to discuss whether they were gonna approve this. And I just wanna know if we had an update on that or when we will get an update on that.
Thank you. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Your update is they approved it this morning.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Do you?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one comment. Yeah, the only, the only observation I made in not so much the standalone pond that we're completely, and I'm sure we're gonna be listed as the operator for that particular pond. And under the operation permit, the school board will still be listed as the one that we're gonna expand in fair share. Is that correct?
For the three A, the larger pond?
The larger one, yeah.
That's correct.
The only thing I saw missing in that was the, and I know we're responsible for the maintenance, but you know, they do the biannual stormwater recertification for that. And that wasn't pointed out in the, I know we did the maintenance, the mowing and that sort of thing. But I guess we would reimburse the school board for whatever engineering services they have to recertify that or complete the biannual inspection report.
We've not discussed that specific detail with them, but the permit still remains the school board's responsibility. So if there's something to work out, we may have to.
That could become, I don't think it's an issue, but I'm not even sure why we need to worry about mowing our part of the pond. It's not that big of a deal. But if they're, if they're that detailed on it, perhaps that might be something that we would like to get some clarification on. I don't have an issue with approving it this evening, but that might be just some point to get an understanding on whether informally or formally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vaticius, you pull number ten?
Oh, yes, Mayor. The question I had on West Court Street were the palm trees, the large ones that we'd been given an indication by Duke Energy that once they were unfolded, we might have to trim them or anything. What was the final resolution on that?
Final resolution was to remove that one tree, the one in the middle, that we just simply couldn't find a replacement that would fit within the confines there. We wound up relocating it to another place on Tarpon Avenue, so the tree wasn't disposed of. We just had to found another home.
We relocated that one and the others are fine, right? The other big ones?
They're okay, yes. For at least five years or so, we think. And as long as we keep them trimmed, there shouldn't be any issues. That's what we were told by Duke.
Yeah, I, well, wait, there's nothing worse than the tree that's, and I guess we would do the trimming or is this something that Duke Energy's contractors are gonna do?
Well, I think we're gonna be proactive about it. We wanna make sure we're ahead of that curve.
That, that'd be terrific. Are we gonna replace that one tree with anything?
At this point, we couldn't really find anything that would fit in there. There, it still could be done. I'm not saying it can't be, but we had some trouble.
On our expenses, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other commission comments on those two items? Do you know? Are there any public comments on those two items? Item number six and ten. Ms. Jacobs, any emails on those two items?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, anybody online wishing to speak on those two items?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. I need a motion for item number six and ten.
Motion to approve number, I consent agenda, item six and ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticius?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Malahouzis.
Yes. We're gonna go to addendum number one, which is the lease agreement with Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society Incorporated Staff Report, Mr. La Course.
Yes, and Mr. Hoffman's here. Our agreement, our ten-year agreement has come time to renew. When talking with them, so the attorney worked on some minor language changes that's agreed upon by both the Historical Society and us. And we're presenting you a contract for the next ten years. I can say we have a great partnership. We work well on any issues at the depot and we look forward to another ten years of that great working relationship. And, you know, what they provide at our depot. And again, Mr. Hoffman is here if he'd like to address anything on the contract.
Thank you. We're going to the public comments. Do you wanna speak? Yes, please come to the podium. This one there. Thank you.
Mayor, we're gonna do public comments first.
Yeah.
Commission comments.
Go to that order.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and our commission and our staff and those online. My name's Ed Hoffman. Typically, it's Hoffman Architects, twenty-nine West Orange Street. Tonight, though, more importantly, it's Acting President of the Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society. The library gave you a presentation of last year. I'm supposed to do it for the last ten years because it was a ten-year lease that is finally, is finally coming, coming due. Some of our board are here, a number of them, which I'm very grateful for, love to have the backup. So, but I'm gonna go very quickly because I just wanna give you a little update. A lot of people say, well, what is it? What are y'all doing with that museum with the depot? And so I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background. I'll be as quick as I, quick as I can. First of all, the, of course, the depository of all the, you know, we're kind of the heartbeat and soul of the history of Tarpon Springs. We're kind of the caretakers of that. And so we take that very seriously. And, and I think first of all, we're probably the welcome center in town. There at the depot, we get, you know, so many people coming in. And typically, it's between five and six thousand people that come to us annually, which is a lot, particularly with the, with the limited number of hours that we have. And also that, for example, typically, we get about a hundred and fifty international visitors into the, into the museum. So that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive in terms of its world spread. Of course, two thousand twenty was a really, I don't need to tell you all, it's a very, very tough year for everybody and the museum isn't exempt from that. We lost three months that we were totally closed and, but then we're, we've come back with social distancing and some different strategies to keep everybody safe there. So even despite that, we're, last year, we were, in two thousand twenty, we were doing twenty-seven hundred people, which is, which is pretty good, I think. And that's, that's really starting to climb again. So we're, you know, we're very pleased about that. We're also, you know, when I say the welcome center, we're the guys, people downtown that, people, they come in and ask where, where this is, where that is, where this place to eat or, you know, whatever. Probably the most popular question I would guess is that is, where's the Sponge Docks? Yeah, so, so we're part of the information booth for Tarpon Springs as well. We're also a research facility in terms of historical research and we get all kinds of interesting questions that come there. And I wanna thank Phyllis Kuliannis, who is, is our archives, Vice President of Archives and basically lives and breathes and inside the museum, working on that as her husband Pete will probably testify too. So, but anyway, some of the things they do is government research where, for example, Pinellas County Schools came, came to us and, and asked, they wanted to know the history of desegregation schools in Tarpon Springs, as we were one of the first schools in the, in the county to be just desegregated. So those kinds of things become very important historic that also goes out, not just stain in Tarpon Springs. Book authors from all over the place, both fiction and nonfiction, come and ask about, you know, while they're doing their research on their books. And that also, of course, goes out. And then, of course, it's a private request. People come to us all the time about, well, I'm about to buy this house or I've bought this house, but I wanna know the history of it, you know, around the bayou or wherever in our historic district. And so we have a lot, wealth of information in the archives on, on those kinds of things to do research. We also are doing, assisting the city with the historic marker program. So giving the background of these buildings and different things as to what happened there to put on, to put on markers. So another thing that we do is, you know, the community function. So we do so many things. We're doing, one of the important things that we are looking at is, is that we have so much history and so much of it is in people's minds, you know, those, those people that have been here a long, long time. And so we're worried about losing those people. Every time I, my office is close to the Greek church and when they're having a funeral, I'm always, you know, I can't help but think there went a piece of history, you know, when I, when I go back and I'm having a funeral. So, so we're trying to gather those, trying to give story core type of documentation from a lot of the residents that have had a background here growing up. And one of the things that we do is Tales of Tarpon, which has been a lot of fun. We've done a number of those now. And that's where people talk and they, and we record, document their recordings of, of their growing up or their living in Tarpon Springs. And they, some are really wonderfully fun stories. And when we, we're getting ready to try to start those up again, since we can get out of this, our little pandemic episode here. So we'll be back on, online with those soon. So we do, we've always done historic teas every year that bring together, we honor families of, of a Greek family, Afro-American family and a white family. And they tell stories. We honor those families and they tell their stories of history. This has always been such a wonderful, diverse community that we live in and that really separates that. Honors that. Done historic fashion show. I could go on and on, but fashion shows, the historic golf tournament. A lot of people don't know our own little golf course here. The city's golf course is, is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, in Tar, in the, in Pinellas County. That's something to brag about, but we're doing a golf tournament there. It's a good outside COVID thing to do. And that's gonna be May sixteenth and we'll try to find some historic things to back, as background for that. So I invite everybody that wants to connect with us and, and get on that. We do historic cemetery tours, you know, in, in the Arcadia Cemetery. And we're starting up again with this thing starting to ease up on the pandemic. We'll be doing house tours again, historic homes around the city. Community partners, we're, we're so, you know, of course tied in so closely with the city and, and the Heritage Center and the Cultural Center. Those things are, are very important to us. St. Petersburg College, they're part of the Tales of Tarpon documentary types of things. There are Tarpon Merchants Association, a HEPA, Friends of Anclaw Key State Park and Lighthouse. There's, you know, it's a historic lighthouse. We're trying to build the partnership between sharing the history of that with those people. And, and the two cemeteries, of course, Rose and the Rose Cemetery, as well as Arcadia Cemetery and Peace for Tarpon. It's just to name a few. Of course, one of the big things with the depot is that it's the depository for the, for our wonderful collection of all the different artifacts that we have. And so there's so many things that are on display and as well as, you know, just a tremendous amount of information in the files that Phyllis is in charge of back in the archives. I mean, that's, that's, that's like sacred ground really should be for the city and it is, and we appreciate that. And then the, another part of our collection really is, is the jetty. That's a very important part of our, our collection. It's one of the most wonderful pieces that we have. And it's also been such a wonderful community effort with so many people chiming in and contributing to that mission. Unfortunately, it's been a little bit quiet. The COVID thing is kind of, you know, we're not out and about like it has been in the past. But John Terrapini is our, our chairman of that committee and he's a board member. And so we have a lot of plans to do some different things coming up. It'll be, hopefully, it'll be at the golf, historic golf tournament and we'll be using it around town more and more. We've done a number of events with the, with it. And so that's a precious part of our, our collection. Projects right now, we're doing the virtual tour collection. Projects right now, we're doing the virtual tour. On for the museum, you know, since this COVID thing, we're, it's also pushing us, like Zoom and everything else, it's kind of pushing us along into, to the new, new way of doing things. And, and so the idea of a virtual tour, similar to the Leaper Rattner Museum we're doing there is, is that you can, go online and be able to see so many of the things and be introduced to the museum there online. So we're, we're excited about that as well as reworking our, our website. So we're getting drug into the, to the, to the future. Which we're excited about. And then probably most importantly is, want to be here to thank the city for all the support over the years for the, for the museum, for the depot and having the, Historical Society that's been around for quite some time. My dad was president for twenty-five years and, was there when it was CRX and then became the city property and that they were, they've been so supportive to us, to the group. So, and the maintenance that, that, you know, Tom Function and, and, Mr. McClure, of course, has been so supportive of, you know, our new paint job and maintaining the building very well. So, so we're proud of it and the city should be proud of their building. And assistant, you give us assistance for part of the salary for the, our director. Museum director. And so we're, we appreciate that as well as the storage of the jitney. Y'all have been storing the jitney for us. Back in the shed for quite some time and we appreciate that. And we're hoping, we're looking forward to a partnership where we can work out a new home for it, where it's going to be on display. And so everybody in town can see it and it's not in a, it's not a storage shed. So we'll work together hopefully and, and make that happen. So with all that, I, appreciate the time that you've shared, allowed us to, to talk here and encourage anybody that wants to come into the museum to come in. And we'd love to have anybody join us as a volunteer or simple membership so that you know what's going on and you're on our email list. And that kind of thing. So we're doing a lot of wonderful things. Some people don't know that, but, but we do. And so with that, I'll sit down and shut up. Anyway, thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Ms. Kuliannis, do you want to share anything with us? Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? I hear none. Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are you wanting to speak?
Yes, please. Panayaties Kulyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. The, the Historical Society, the Public Arts Committee. They're one of the most important departments in our community. At the last few meetings, when we were talking about this clock that was going to be brought into downtown Tarpon Springs, I heard Mr. Hoffman speak about how to bring this.
Why you always forget to speak to the chair?
I am speaking.
Turn your face this way, sir.
Sir, hold the quorum. Please hold the quorum.
I do.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman talked about how this clock wasn't meant to be added to our city because we historically had a clock already. So we need to decide, does the CRA run the show on historical stuff being added to certain areas? Does the Historic Society have a say? Does the Public Arts Committee have a say? We need a fine mesh of historic, of preserving our small town charm at all costs. I finally went to the, the Safford House sometime last year. I met Bruce when showed me around the whole facility and I thought, I was never brought here before as a kid. I'd like to be able to see programs where the youth, maybe once or twice in their elementary or middle school, they're actually taken as a tour to go see that, that beautiful house. Because it's awesome. It really is. So there's plenty of ways to, to grow our youth into understanding history in Tarpon Springs. There's certain statues that I see in town. I necessarily don't agree with them in certain spots. So I would, that lady who's reading the, the book to her child on the bench. I don't know if it's back now, but, what historical perspective does that have to do with Tarpon Springs? And I love the plaques going around town. I, I would like to see now, I don't want to call it idol, you know, idolizing anybody, but I would like to see certain statues of certain, prominent figures from the black community, white community and Greek community that helped shaped up Tarpon Springs. There, you know, so that way when little kids are going by, they read these statues, it gives them a set of inspiration. So believe me, there are people our age, young people who love this town, who want to preserve Tarpon Springs at all costs. We don't care about the special interests of people with their vertical density. We care about preserving your single-family zoning areas. And we will do what it takes to make sure our cha, our town remains small and charming. And we take care of the citizens we have and not this overfluctuated citizens, certain people want to come in. Thank you.
The chair will attend the motion.
So moved.
We go to commission comments. I just like to, the, to say that Historical Society provides a very important service to our residents and to the visitors, as Mr. Hoffman shared with us. Provides a lot of information and also teaches our history, not only to the residents, but to the visitors as well. And I just want to, thank everyone involved with the Historical Society and I am in support with this agreement. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Hoffman, thank you for the update on what's going on in the Historical Society. And also thank you to the whole society for your service to Tarpon Springs and preserving the history of Tarpon Springs for many years. Obviously, we make history every day as we're living, but it's great to hear the, the stories and see the pictures of the history that's been done many, many years ago and what Tarpon Springs, how Tarpon Springs is created and where we're at today. So, again, thank you for moving that forward and keeping those memories alive. Appreciate everything you do.
Commission Terrapini online.
I just want to thank Mr. Hoffman for his presentation, Mayor, and his service and the balance of the board for their service. I don't have any further comments or questions. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your presentation. And thank you to everybody involved with the Historical Society. I've leaned on Historical Society a couple of times as a student and also as a commissioner. And, you know, the museum looks great, but it's really the people there that make it. You know, the volunteers and staff, they couldn't be more professional and knowledgeable. So appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you, Mayor. I, Historical Society is simply a rock for Tarpon Springs. I mean, it, it's just so important. And without it, I, I'm not sure that, we'd have to really, really go hunting for information. And I know that, they're doing a great job with the resources that they have. I very much appreciate Ms. Koliannis and Mr. Koliannis being involved. And, and I know Ms. Dabs is there as well from the Union Academy Neighborhood and I very much appreciate that. The one, I do have one question. And Mr. Hoffman, I know you're an architect, so you could either shake your head yes or no, or is that facility sprinkled? It is. That's great. Because if anything happened to that facility, we'd be in big trouble here in town. So, I don't have any issue at all with the lease. I wish we could make it longer. But, and I don't suspect it's any different than what you've had before. And I would be hopeful that you're not shy of bringing anything to the commissioner, at least the city manager, and he could, bring it to us as far as any improvements that could be made to, to make the presentation of information more helpful. So thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number thirteen, which is a special event. A is the second Saturday market on May eighth, July tenth, August fourteenth, September eleventh, October ninth, and November thirteenth. B is shop, the docks, May twenty-second. And C is general discussion on special events. We will discuss A, B, and C together, but we're going to vote separately. And we're going to go to public comments. Do we have someone from the Merchant Association? Would you please come to the podium?
Good evening. I'm Carol Rodriguez. I'm with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. Your questions?
No, no. Just, do you want to tell us about the plans that you have? I know you got things to share with us.
We're planning the market on May eighth, the second Saturday of every month in Mother Mirror's parking lot. We're going to have thirty vendor spots. And then we're going to try this on the docks on May the twenty-second. And we'll have twelve spots. We're not closing the streets on the docks. We're going to put them on either side of the Sponge Diver and also where the Sponge Exchange is. We've been working with this city for maybe a month now, touring other markets to see about, us bringing a market to Tarpon Springs. We want it, we want bread, fruit, homemade items. So we're hoping that our merchants will want to participate in this. And all the safety protocols will be met.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Decour, I bypassed you. Do you have anything that you want to share with us?
Yes, um, again, this is, this has been a great working relationship with the Merchant Association during all these hard times. And, you know, we've been in communication from the start of this pandemic and on. As they know, from keeping in close communication with us, ever since the beginning of the year, as this pandemic went in two thousand twenty-one, all of the city managers have got together and been working together to try to have a consistent policy on events when things open up to start having them again. We didn't want as a situation, certain cities to go different directions. Some go, so, so we meet every month. Is this, as this pandemic has been going on in, in two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, we've seen a, a better turn with the good luck of these, the value, with the vaccinations and vaccinations coming out. As you know, the county passed a requirement on events over a thousand people. We have been watching that and looking at what that takes. In fact, Oldsmar just got their first event back today. I only got it at four o'clock, so I didn't have time to read it. So they received it about their Oldsmar days. So we have a model of what restrictions and what we have to do for any of those type of events in the future. So this is an attempt we're bringing forward today is they're bringing forward some events to get this started with as other cities are looking at. Obviously, we know our events for the entire year and what we're looking forward to as these vaccinations hopefully keep coming out as the percentage of people in Pinellas County being vaccinated rises as we see the age dropping and the numbers increasing that we can gradually move forward. And we've kind of looked at that for the events coming up as we were hoping to come out of these things later on in, August and September and October, when we really have some big events coming up. And kind of the planning with from the start was, we just start looking at these from a fifty percent capacity, a seventy-five percent capacity, a hundred percent capacity, hoping that when it came that time, we would be able to, to move more towards the hundred percent than the fifty percent. So all events that people are looking forward during the year, we're still, still looking at in some degree. And with whatever we can do, Fourth of July for us is hopeful, but as you know, we're absolutely dependent on the county. And if they're going to allow us to have Howard Park, because without that, it's going to be very difficult. So we began discussions on that. Obviously, things are changing, you know, with, with this pandemic. So every week, things could change. We're in a change for the better. So hopefully it gets better at that time. We had thought of a backup plan of the county. If the times, we're not able to, maybe a Labor Day fireworks to replace those with as possible, but we're still gearing it in talks. I'm not sure what restrictions and that would come back to you. If there are numbers, cars or anything that, if they do allow us to have Howard Park, you know, what the restrictions are going to be. As any of these other events, the, I didn't get a chance to look at the Oldsmar event, but there's a ton of restrictions on them. There's a lot, there's a lot that you have to do to meet that county criteria. And we'll be, we'll be discussing that. I've told them that we've been waiting for one of the first ones to come out so we can look at it for our future events, how we'll deal with it. So we've got that in hand. So we'll meet with the Merchants Association or remember any nonprofit that, you know, events have been open recently. So anyone can come forward, any organization that is able to do the special events, we're ready to sit down and talk with. That process is they put in an application for a special event. It goes to our special event committee of department heads. Then it goes to me for approval to send forward to the board. Or if I deny it, then that organization has the right to appeal it and it goes before the Board of Commissioners. So, ain't talking me having a final say. That's not the case. With our organizations, we have to work that way. So we'll look at anything and take it and whatever the rules and regulations of the time, capacity limits and stuff, we will work and try to bring forward these events. And hopefully, the next month, things will keep progressing like the last month has. And we can get closer and closer to making these events. But we're open and we're to any organization to come forward. Again, we'll be having talks with the merchants now that we've seen this Oldsmar event and we know what the parameters are. You know, we're in talks about some other events coming up. So we're excited to get these out. But we're going to maintain the safety. And, and it's been very good working with the other cities in, in Pinellas County to try to be consistent for all of us and all of the cities on, on these events. So, that's where we are and, and we're open to take these and, and go through the process.
Okay. Public comments. Anyone has any public comments, please come forward to.
Good evening, Maria Seaver, eight two eight eight three zero, Dota Canes. As you all know, good evening to all of you. And, oh, I see you now, Townsend. Glad you're back on. As you all know, I was up here two weeks ago to ask for events to start back up in Tarpon Springs. And we're meeting events that bring people to town. I appreciate Mark calling me the day after the meeting and telling me his concerns and mainly his concerns for the citizens or residents. But, you know, I understand that. But events are happening in other places. They didn't just start this weekend or yesterday or today. So we've had the fine art events in St. Pete. We've got events in Dunedin, events in Palm Harbor. Events that bring people to those communities. And those are the kind of events that we need to have. We had, we have our own residents going to these events. So what's the difference whether they're going somewhere else or here? We've had residents going to Super Bowl, to the St. Pete Fine Art Events, the Dunedin Events, Palm Harbor, and WrestleMania is coming up next month. So I'm sure we'll have some people going to that as well. We also had some city events over the holidays that we did well with, with our Two Tree Lightings, our Boat Parade and Epiphany. And many of the people that might not feel safe going to these events are welcome to not come to them. So, that's something that we always say. I also appreciate the Merchants Association Board for trying to start some, two new events. You say that you talk with the Merchants Association, but you actually only talk to these three ladies. So we, as merchants, have not had the communication until yesterday that these two events were starting. So that's why I had six pages of business owners that signed a petition to start events back up. Because there was no communication with the merchants about what was going on or when we, we were going to start events. Many of the events we started years ago, when I was president of Merchants Association, were forms because we wanted to bring visitors to our town and help business owners get through the slow summer months. These events grew every year and people keep coming back to them. And they expect these events to keep happening. Of course, we didn't have them last year. But we're prepared to start having them again this year. Our residents also enjoy these events. And we need to recover from our losses from last year. So the events like the Hippie Fest, the Seafood Fest, now changed to the Music Fest, the first Fridays that are more recent, are events that bring visitors to our town and income and revenue. Unfortunately, these events. Unfortunately, these events that are being brought forward to you tonight will not necessarily do that. It's great to have a Saturday market in the Mother Mirror's parking lot, but many of our surrounding communities also have markets, so why would somebody from Dunedin come to Tarpin Springs? It's basically gonna be a local market. And how will this event help our business owners? The other event, Shop the Docks, with twelve vendors and one musician. I'm not sure why they would bother putting this event on, what is it gonna do for the Sponge Docks? How many people are gonna come to this event? I don't think it's worth their time to, to put on the event, and I wouldn't vote for it if I were you. So it, it's disappointing to, you know, see something so small starting to come back to Tarpin, because we need larger events to come back to Tarpin. Plus, this event with twelve vendors will all happen on our sidewalks, where we need those for our pedestrians. The point we're trying to make as merchants is that we need these popular events to start back up, we need customers, we need people. Okay, thank you. I suggested two weeks ago that-
By the way, his name is Mr. Dalakas.
Mr. Dalakas, yes, sorry. So I suggested, when I was up here a couple of weeks ago, that we do some research of what other communities are doing. So I know they're having events in a lot of places, so how are they meeting the, the guidelines, what are the county guidelines? We need to do that research, and we need to know what it is as we apply for events and try to plan events. Some of these events take months to plan for, so we can't wait until the end of May or June to plan Hippie Fest for August. Those plans need to have already started. So I'd, I know this is a discussion item, but I'd like you guys to think about letting us turn in applications for these events. They can always be scaled down, but they have to start being planned. So we need to know whether we can have these types of events, and I know that many of our merchants want them in town, because we're all suffering. And so we need to bring people in, we need to show off our city, like we always have in the past, and bring people back over and over again. So what our request is, is to have, to be allowed to turn in applications now, and see how it goes, and at least plan the events, start planning the events, so that we know we're gonna have Hippie Fest and Seafood Fest and Music Fest, and those big events that bring income into our businesses in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Turner at seven ninety-two Chesapeake Drive. So in regards to this item, I'm glad to see that we are taking a first step into making these plans to support these local businesses, while maintaining the proper safety protocols, that's very important. As Ray has stated, it's not ideal, but it is a good first start, we have to start somewhere. So, you know, we're, the organization of this is showing some out-of-the-box thinking, but unfortunately, I think they're limited because of the overly restrictive rules that we have, that are severely limiting the operations of our food trucks. So I just, I fail to understand the city's rationale for these rules, particularly at events and other areas that aren't easily served by brick-and-mortar restaurants. So are we gonna prohibit vendors at these events, like, you know, we've got in front of us that are selling jewelry or artwork, because we already have shops in town selling those items? That, that's our question here. So in addition to this, the thing that's also concerning is prohibiting these food trucks from operating on private property. If a church, or a business, or a private residence wants to host an event and can safely provide space for a food truck, how is this hurting local restaurants? If I wanted to throw a party at my private home, or rent a hall for an event, I can hire an outside caterer. I don't even have to, there's no city rules that say I can't hire someone from Dunedin or Oldsmar, I can go outside the city limits. But I, if I want a food truck that is based here in Tarpin, I can't have that truck by the rules that we have at that event. And that just doesn't make sense to me. And so these trucks, they support our other local businesses, bringing those in, bringing it into these events, will draw that business in, like Ray was saying. They're not a threat to these restaurants. So they've also have overhead expenses, like our traditional brick-and-mortar businesses, and they want to offer a unique and quality product in a creative way. And isn't that what a town with a deep tradition rooted in sponges is all about? Our sponges are a unique and quality product that you can't get anywhere else, and they have a supportive relationship, a symbiotic relationship with other businesses. And that sounds a lot like that connection between like the food trucks and breweries, or food trucks and these city events. So we're not asking for any kind of ordinances that would give any food truck in, from anywhere, free rein to park wherever they want in town. We just want to support our local businesses, and food trucks are a local business. So I'm asking that we look to other cities, like we were talking about, like we've looked at other cities, what they're doing with their events, to see how they manage these operations, so we can broaden our options and broaden the options at these city events. And we just think this is not a new idea, other people are doing it and doing it well, I'm certain we can do the same thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Christopher Boski, one-six-zero-two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, three-four-six-eight-nine. So once again, it comes back to an issue of communication. And again, it just doesn't make any sense to me, this isn't New York, this isn't Miami, it's a little town. You know where Ray's shop is, you know where Mykonos Restaurant is. One of you guys could just drop in there and talk to him about it. You know, let him know, and maybe listen to what they have to say. Or at least pick up the phone and give him a call, write him an email, let him know what you guys are planning. It just boggles my mind, this little town, I mean, I got a call from Dave Agers. He's over a whole bigger section than just, you know, the twenty-something thousand people we have in Tarpin Springs. Yet that man called me because of my concerns about the Anclot River property. But I can't get one of my own commissioners or city manager to talk to me about it, you know, without pulling teeth, putting in records requests. What kind of city do you want to live in? You know, when our city manager started, I gotta go back to this, you went bending over backwards, man. I just, I used to talk about it to, blew in the face to people, like, man, this guy is really working it. He, you had all the cops filling in all the gaps, you know? The previous city manager was letting things lapse, and you filled in all the voids, so impressive. I'm really proud that we supported you in that. It's not too late to turn it around, man, pick up the phone, drop into the restaurant, have a bite to eat, have a conversation with this man right here, this woman over, it doesn't make sense. What, what are we gaining from this weird animosity? Nobody gains from that. You know, everybody wants the same thing, they want our town to be successful, they want our businesses to be successful, they want our people to be safe. There's gotta be a balance here. We can achieve that balance, you know, these masks may be annoying, but man, this is the cheapest way to, you know, if it really works. And people say, you know, experts say, doctors been using them for hundreds of years, surgery and whatnot, vet disease. It's pretty cheap, pretty easy, it's kind of a pain, but you know what, people have been getting used to it, so maybe that's a solution. I don't know. And I know you guys got it tough on this one. This pandemic doesn't make it easy on any public official, and I don't envy you in your decisions. But I gotta say, communication goes a long way, man, a long way. All you gotta do is drop in, talk to these folks, and they'll respect you for that. It's not too late to turn it around. Can end on a high note here, everybody working together, get through this pandemic instead of this scorched earth policy, screw them. What good is that? It's not helping anybody. Nobody respects that. Nobody. This can be fixed. These relationships doesn't have to end like this. You guys can work together. These people are willing to do, so she just said, what are we doing? What are we doing here? We gonna do the right thing? Are we gonna step up, fill in all the gaps? Are we just gonna get in our corner and say, no? We can do better, thank you.
Next picker.
Fana Yatii School, yes, five-nine-five Peninsula Avenue, these are my own thoughts and expressions, any, some Marcus will be donating our time. First, I want to say, the last time I brought up, we're talking about the special events and how the merchants were struggling, one of the three ladies behind me made a smart comment saying, we're not struggling at all, business is good. Well, did they go talk to all the downtown businesses in Tarpin Springs? I went and talked to Copenhagen today, they need the foot traffic. I went and talked to One Amazing Fine, the foot traffic is something they need desperately. I went to the antique shop that's on the northwest corner of the Pinellas Trail, they absolutely need the foot traffic too, so does the Tarpin Guild. I stopped by the Bruhaha today and asked them, they haven't had a First Friday yet since they've been here. Where else did I go? I stopped by Ella's Boutique as well, that little cute store, and I, you know, I went and asked each and every one of them. They want First Friday open up, they had somebody, I believe it may have been Mrs. Seber, helped pass out a petition to get those, to get it signed. Their voices matter, just because there's a couple people inside the Merchants Association that are very close to Mark, doesn't mean everybody agrees. It doesn't mean what the few interests, it's in the best interest of overall everybody in the city. So if, I want to make sure, Mark has talked about coordinating with other city managers and events, well, did you find out how Dunedin handled the St. Patrick's Day event, because it was awesome. I walked up and down the streets, they had a couple road signs that said, maintain social distancing, and everybody knew how to be responsible. So why can't we have anything like that? St. Patrick's Day in Dunedin is one of their biggest days, but yet they made it happen, so can Tarpin Springs. And like I said, we're, we're talking about special events and slow playing this progress, little wine walks, little, you know, I get it to start, and they're trying to do their best to work with you guys, but you guys are being too tough on them. It's very hypocritical for Mark to go to a special event in Tampa, where thousands of people are, with air, inside, air conditioning, air conditioning circulating, but yet you Tarpanites and business owners can't have events. I would love to hear his reasoning, I mean, I want to hear just a couple statements from him. He is our city manager, and it's no different from your hypocrisy, when you didn't want to maintain that CDC international flight, which you still haven't apologized for, but we've let it go.
Now, I guess you don't know what the CDC guidelines are.
I guess you don't, sir, from international travel, you didn't maintain them, so-
And you're wrong about that, go ahead, continue.
And regarding the fireworks, sir, now we just found out, you could put a special permit in for a Labor Day fireworks, which isn't, which the county doesn't make legal anyway, so why couldn't you guys look out for the Orthodox faithful for five minutes on our most sacred day? We could put in the request to light consumer-grade fireworks, which we don't even need the permit, but yet you guys always want to give us a hard time. And the docks, your festivals, you know, Tarpin Springs, once we open up our city, we're gonna throw some awesome festivals, rock festivals, your hippie festivals, you know how we're gonna do it? We're gonna find ways to get the best entertainment, we're gonna spend a thousand, fifteen-hundred or two-thousand dollars for each band, they're gonna rock for two hours straight, you're gonna have complete entertainment for eight hours straight on three or four different stages, right in the Sponge Docks, or a couple at Craig Park, down at the Sponge Docks, and you create a festival to the likes that Tarpin Springs has never seen before. You guys can do it, you just gotta be creative, and you all have to work together. And like I said, one final time, please, let's hear Mark LaCourse's reasoning why it's okay for him to go to an event like that, but yet you business owners can't, can't live your lives and try to support your families.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand, you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time.
Okay.
Mike Eisner, fifteen-fifteen Riverside Drive, good evening all, I've been listening to all the comments that are being made here, and I'm not sure that you are all tuned in to the fact that Tarpin Springs has a reputation as of the land of no. If you try to get a permit, or try to get something accomplished as a resident, it's very difficult to move ahead. It could be a four, six months, seven months ordeal. I'm listening to people asking to have a business, there should be no harm in having a food truck here. There should be no harm in doing any of these things that the people before me have speaking about. I just don't understand why, when it's something that the commission wants done, we get it done. And we get it done even when most of the Tarpin residents don't want it done. But the things that the residents do want done, you seem to want to go against, and I'm just sitting here, I, I apologize for not being there in person, I have company. But I just don't understand why we're against the things that will make Tarpin stronger, and what we do is, we only follow through on things that you guys have somewhat of a self-interest in. I'm glad to hear that nobody has been speaking out negatively against any one person. I'm thrilled when I'll hear that the mayor will no longer have to say, be civil, before every speech. I'm glad to see that everybody is speaking civil, but we have to change from the land of no to the land of yes. And I have nothing else to say, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do you have anybody else online wishing to speak?
If anyone else is online who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. The chair will detain the motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you email?
Yes, I already, there's no emails. The chair will detain the motion for, A.
It's a moved. Second.
Okay, are there any commission comments? I, I like to say that I support both events at the Mirror's, Mother Mirror's parking lot and on the Decanis Boulevard. We need to start gradually to have public events, to continue to follow the safety and the CDC guidelines. Also, I'd like to request to Mr. LaCura's that on the event to the Decanis Boulevard, we're gonna have an additional foot traffic, so I think it's a good idea to have an additional policeman there. Okay. Vice Mayor Carr.
Yeah, I, I mean, I support both of these, I appreciate the Merchants Association coming and presenting some ideas. There's a lot of work that goes behind these events, the city doesn't put these events on, but they happily come alongside with you, and I really appreciate your willingness to want to put these on. I do have a couple of questions for Ms. Rodriguez.
Sure.
So for the record, I just wanted some clarification, the Merchants Association, there's a large group of merchants that are part of the association, correct?
In the past, yes, but right now, we have a lot of merchants who haven't bothered to pay their dues, so they are merchants of Tarpin Springs, which we have been doing ads, getting people to come to Tarpin.
Okay, in the past, how many businesses are a part of the Merchants Association typically?
We've had a hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight, that's a pretty good amount of businesses, right? There's one thing that we didn't go over when, it was really what the Merchants Association has done in the two thousand, in two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one years, with the Christmas Angel charity, with the picnic tables for advertising. Did you want to touch on that at all tonight, or is that just something that was just for backup?
We actually handed this out, Sherry and I went door to door to the merchants on the docks, and we only did half of downtown so far. But yes, the merchants took on fifty-five kids in Tarpin- But yes, the merchants took on fifty-five kids in Tarpon Springs and their families to give them a Merry Christmas. And we had great response from our wonderful merchants and the residents of Tarpon. We've been doing this now for several years and it's a great charity event. This year we were a little concerned, but the businesses and the residents went above and beyond. Because normally we have our merry martini party and this year we could not with COVID. So we gave everyone a very Merry Christmas. We just did picnic tables for the Shepherd Center. We complained about the homeless running around and eating on our sidewalks. So we took a stand to help them. They needed tables. They made a beautiful area in the back. And lately, we have, I personally have not seen a lot of homelessness, homeless people eating on the streets of Tarpon. So that was a big plus. And the police department and the towing and the landmark plaque, everyone worked together. So that was a great project that just happened last week. Our advertising, just people don't realize, but we spent thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars last year advertising. We work with the city on paying the billboards, the chamber, the city and us do the signs that are down at the Clearwater Airport. We've done TV commercials last year. We won ads with the Suncoast, the Tampa Bay Times. We put graduation signs around last year for the kids, so businesses could have extra signage congratulating the class of twenty twenty. And we're continuing to advertise. We have another big ad coming out. It's eighty-seven thousand papers that it will go in, Discover Pinellas. That's March twenty-fifth. We're looking at the markets. I have talked to four or five other promoters. Pinellas County is the strictest county to put on events. And our First Fridays people, I want them back, but we have more than a thousand people that come to the event. Unless we put a cage around and have an entry and an exit, we cannot do it. Osmar has to gate. They're only allowed eight hundred people. You have to have thermometers. They have to have wristbands. So we have been working to see what kind of other events that we can do. So we thought if we did the market and also shop the docks, we're trying to look at doing Athens by night. Cause we have restaurants there and we could do pre seating. So we are looking ahead. And if you give us the go-ahead for Hippie Fest or anything, we're ready to roll. We have things all lined up. This is not the first time that we have been working on events.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So with the farmer's market type that you're talking about on Mother Mears parking lot, have you looked at Safford at all? Or looked at the top of the bayou where the city has that large piece of land next to the little building for a market or looking at those places?
No, but we can. The reason Mother Mears typically the market, we used to have a wonderful market there years and years ago. Laura Johnson did a fabulous job. There's a lot of electricity if we needed it, is in Mother Mears. But I have no problem looking at other locations.
I mean, from my standpoint, Mark and to the staff, I think Mother Mears is an important area for Tarpon Springs because of the parking that it serves for downtown. The businesses that are going on throughout the weekend. Love the idea of the farmer's market type event. I totally, I mean, I'll be there for sure. I think it's a great idea. I think utilizing Safford, I mean, like south of Tarpon Avenue and between Lemon and Tarpon Avenue would be a good alternative to look at also. And even the top of the bayou, we have that large piece of land now that oversees the bayou and it'd help pull people that are visiting downtown, also down in the bayou. I think that would be an excellent spot for a farmer's type market as well. I know I spoke to the individual whose business is next to that property and she was really like, would love to see something like that down there as well too. So I mean, if we could look at doing some alternative sites, maybe so we could preserve the parking, because parking is so limited in downtown. And then also, I think these other sites would really serve a farmer's market better, in my opinion. I would support that moving forward. But overall, I appreciate what you're doing. I know there's a lot of work that goes behind this. You don't have a large staff. I think it's you and some volunteers, right? So thank you for your willingness to, I guess, the leader in this and try to move these events forward. But I'm happy from a city side to partner along with you all to support this.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thanks.
Commission Chair Panny.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor, did you say that we were taking A, B, and C together or just A and B?
Yeah, we're going to discuss all this together and then we're going to vote each one of them separately.
Got you. So I'll just initially start off by saying that I think that the special events are something that's been probably overdue to start getting the ball rolling within our community. The residents and the merchants need them tremendously. Most, most of the merchants that I know that are on kind of the Tarpon Avenue or in the urban core Sponge Docks area, they rely tremendously on at least one special event a month. I'd venture to say that that's probably how they pay most of their bills is via that special event a month. Having one, if not two at times, is something that probably gets them through the month, if not the year. So I definitely think that it's something that we need to move, move forward with on bringing it back. And I also recognize that it takes, you know, weeks, if not months worth of planning and a tremendous amount of effort from many volunteers and many different organizations that collaborate to try and make these things happen. And not just happen, but make them a successful event that everybody can be proud of and a worthwhile event to attend. So for, for me personally, as it relates to the discussion on the special events, I think that that's something we need to do and we need to act on right away. I'm pleased to see that the second Saturday market idea is being brought forward. It looks to me like that is gonna be a successful event. I like to see that within the backup that there is an opportunity for, for local businesses to participate first. And then after that, if not enough slots have been filled, or if there are open slots that then we can go without, or go outside of the community to try and find more vendors. So I do think that that is something that's worth noting in the special event applications. I'm appreciative of Commissioner Seber coming forward at our last meeting and also this meeting to bring a list of people who have signed a petition to try and get the events going. And also recognize that while the Shop the Docks event looks nice and it is a way to get our feet off, off the ground, that it is an event that, you know, might be smaller in nature, smaller than we're used to. But, but I will support that event tonight as well, the Shop the Docks event. I, I will say that I recognize that in, you know, there are still restrictions to these events, right? There are limitations as it relates to attendees and some of those things can be problematic as far as how you, police that, I guess, as for lack of a better term. But, but on the city's end, whatever we can do on our end with temperature stations or any kind of outside the box approach that we can take and contribute to. I, as a commissioner, am willing to do that. So I'm not totally familiar with some of the things that, that are going on to try and host special events. I am familiar with some. I have seen some abstract temperature stations or, you know, you step on a mat and your temperature's red or, or different types of barricading to, you know, make an entrance and an exit. But whatever we can do to strategize or think outside the box to collaborate with the Merchants Association and some of these other groups and organizations that are helping to put on these events and plan these events. I would like to, or I would consider dedicating more resources to try and make these events happen. So in short, I support the Saturday market. I support shops at the docks. And I would encourage this board to encourage the community, not just the Merchants Association, but encourage the community to submit special event applications. And let that be the decision of not only the city manager, but also the Board of Commissioners and bring them all forward and approve them case by case basis if need be. But it is definitely something that we need, not only in the business community, but also for our residents. Thank you.
Commission Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do just have a clarifying question for our city manager. What, if any, proposed events have we rejected recently?
I'm not. Again, to make it clear, I know we've got a lot of people going off on other tangents and other causes. But as I said, we are open to accept applications for special events from any group. A lot what you hear of tonight is internal struggles, struggles that should not be involving the commissioners, but involving the merchants and the members of the Merchants Association. I've told them that they need to take care of their business and it's not the commissions to bring forward. I've also told them there are other organizations that can bring forward events that if they're unhappy with the Merchants Association, then they can bring others forward. I will receive, as I have said and repeated, I will talk to, I will receive any events and will process it through the processes. So there has been none that I have rejected. So again, I'm putting out there, but again, people who are not the nonprofit, a group of merchants can't put on an event. They have to be through the Merchants Association or another nonprofit or another, another group. I've talked to people. Andy Salavarez can verify anytime he needs me, knows how to call me and I call him back and get in touch with him. So any of the other groups that want to put those on, we're receptive and we'll be receiving events and we'll do what we can to help put that event through with whatever guidelines are in place at the time. I don't know how much more I can say it. So people need to bring those events forward to go through the processes. And again, you know, if it's something they don't like or I reject, or they don't like the restrictions on it, they, their process says they can appeal it to the board and the board makes the final decision. But I don't see that coming about. So I don't see the communications issues here. A lot of them need to be taken by them themselves. And again, I'm ready to process any events from any organization that can go forward and put events together. I've made that clear.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So again, we're taking applications. We haven't rejected any events. We're ready to welcome back outdoor events with open arms. We support our merchants. We support our chamber. We support our local businesses. And I'm excited to get outdoor events back. But again, we have not rejected any events. And I'm happy to support all the events listed tonight.
Commission Educators.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a number of comments and I'm gonna, I don't have them in any particular order. First of all, by all means, submit applications. We're open for business. I think that's the first step in discussing any special event. I've received a number of calls concerning, and we've received emails as well, with the impression that we, the city does not want to do special events. And I don't think that's the case. We need to have something to work with. And with regard to stepping out and talking to people, I do that all the time. I would, I meet with former commissioners receiver often. I see Andreas of Mykonos all the time. And I know what is in their minds and what their thoughts are concerning not just special events, but what goes on at the Sponge Docks. With regard to the food trucks, I'm on record with the city manager that I'm receptive to revisiting that ordinance. And, and the one thing that Ms. Turner mentioned that does bother me as well with regard to these events is the ability to have a food truck at a, at a small event at a person's home and that sort of thing. And right now, there isn't a mechanism for doing that. However, however, I did discuss that with the city manager. And unless I misspeak and he can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a temporary use process, permit process that right now only applies to commercial businesses. But I, I'm hoping that the staff is looking at expanding that to perhaps do these sort of things with food trucks at homeowners' parties and things like that, on private property through this temporary use permit. And that would solve that problem, at least as I understand, a large part of the business of food trucks anyway, other than going to these events and things like that. So I wanted to mention that. I think, you know, in my discussing to, with everybody, actually, the, I think the issue is, I think Mr. Roboski touched on this communication. And I think maybe a little bit of misunderstanding. I think that there is a great deal of anticipation and maybe a little apprehension on the part of everybody with exactly what's going on. And again, the way to clear that up is communication. And I think we all want the same thing for Tarpon Springs and that's to move it forward, move it forward out of this epidemic environment that we're in and it's extremely restrictive. The, before COVID, these events went on like clockwork, some of them for up to thirty years. You could count on it happening, period. And, 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 and people had them on their calendars and they expected businesses and additional business that day. When COVID hit, we went from, from having these expectations and this anticipation to nothing. I mean, we just didn't have any events. And now we're moving back into where we're coming out of COVID. And then again, there's this anticipation. There hasn't been a good deal of communication on our part with regard to our being receptive to applications and things of that nature. I think many of the businesses, as I understand, for example, there, there's other annual events that because of COVID, I want to say that I've talked to their sponsors, which were not the Tarpon Merchants Association, that they're, they feel it's going to be a challenge to jumpstart some of those special events, just because of much of the infrastructure, the, the participants, the, the, the talent that goes into this have rescheduled elsewhere, any other parts of the country. So there's a little concern on their part and I can understand that that's probably the case on our, on our, on our businesses as well, whether that in fact is going to happen. And, you know, the, the thing that, that I think many of the businesses want to know, in addition to the, the small events that we have before us tonight, which I, I also think it's, it's a place to start. You have to start somewhere. So I don't have an issue with anything that's being requested this evening. The, but what, but what businesses want to know is, is the circumstances concerning this, a couple of the things that we'll mention this evening. The seafood festival, music festival, Oktoberfest, Hippie Fest. And, and my understanding is that in this sense of anticipation, that these events will take place if they can take place in one form or another. I know one of the concerns is right now, right now, today, and I'm hoping that'll change in the future, but right now, today, the, we're limited to about a thousand people in any one of these events. Many of these events that we, I just mentioned, these larger ones draw four to six thousand people. So the idea is that we have an event, everybody around the Tampa Bay area thinks it's, we're open for business again. We can allow one thousand in. And, and several thousand more show up and they're turned away. It's not an issue of safety. It's just an issue of marketing and being turned away. And that leaves a bad taste in their mouth and, and also the fact that they've had to drive to get to Tarpon Springs in the first place. So that's the downside of doing something like this. But nevertheless, I'm also a strong believer that these applications should be submitted. The city manager and I had a conversation about this for the full size of the event and just plan on it that way. And then if things don't change, and hopefully they are getting better, but if they don't change to the extent that by the time this event, such as the fall for Oktoberfest, doesn't allow us to have that large event, then we can scale back as time goes on. But we need to have, to give these businesses some hope. And, and I'm pretty sure this is the what, how the Tarpon Merchants feel about this. And, and I know we're still on the discussion on these things and, and these are events being sponsored this evening. So I wouldn't mind if Ms. Rodriguez or Ms. Went, or Ms. Gibson gets up and addresses that, that, that nothing is off the table that we've had in the past. And that there's this, just waiting for something to happen. But in the meantime, again, we can actually accept those applications, in my opinion, plan for the full size of the event as it's been done in the past and then scale back. Rather than submitting something like for Oktoberfest with a thousand people and then as time goes near, expand it. I think it's a lot easier to go with a full event and, and draw back than it is to try. than it is to try and start off slow, slow and start trying to pick up vendors as we go along because the COVID restrictions are easy. So that's my thoughts on all of this and, and. And I think that's it. I, I think that the, the objective is to move the, the city forward and to recover from COVID. I think we all want the same thing. And I think it's, it's, I've mentioned it today to somebody. It's like not having ridden a bicycle for a very long time. You certainly haven't forgotten, but you need to get on and just start very, very slowly. And after a few rides, you're very, very comfortable. But this is where we are right now. And I think that if, again, I'm going to ask one of the three ladies here if they can get up and make a comment to that effect to give people some reassurance that none of these large events that we've, we've talked about are off the table. And hopefully this discussion this evening will encourage them to submit applications for that and let the city manager start working on those. So thank you.
Commissioner, do you have a question for the merchants association? Do you have a question for them?
Yes, I, I'd asked Mrs. Went to address the comment that I had with regard to these larger events that the Tarpon Merchants Association has historically sponsored, whether anything is off the table from those and that if they, if they can happen, they will happen as far as they're concerned.
I'm Sherri Went. I'm the vice president of the merchant board and we've been doing this for several years. I, I would like to say that there is a whole lot of hope in this. We are getting ready to just sort of get our feet wet. We're going to plunge in and try to do a couple of things. We've been meeting with our, our chief, Cochran and, and also Chief Young now. We've met with the fire marshal. We've met with anybody who will talk to us. And when can we do this? How can we do this? And it's just not so easy that you know that if we, if we put on a first Friday, thousands will come. They're, they, that's just what happens and, and because we, our city has sponsored really good first Fridays and really good hippie fest. And lots of people will come. And yes, we want to do it. But it has been the general attitude of, of our, our services, the city and that, that we do have a Pinellas County ordinance that we have to try to work with or it becomes like next to impossible. We aren't able to fence ourselves in. So we are definitely ready to put on an event. We thought we would start small and we've got permission to do that. And it seems that you're in agreement with us. And on that same day that we're going to do the, the market in the morning, even though it seems kind of crazy, we are going to put a wine walk in the evening. It's putting two totally different groups of people in town. It gets us to advertise. And so we will be working from six in the morning until probably midnight that day. But we get a chance to, we've, we're already there. We're already getting volunteers. We're already doing the, the COVID restrictions. So we figured this is a way sort of to block them out that day. And then if that goes well and it, and it looks good and we don't have any, any issues, then we will do whatever we're allowed to do in the future when we bring it back to you. Whatever seems to be what the city thinks we should be able to do. If and when we can do a big event and, and the idea that it's going to take us a long time, we are ready to do an event. We've been doing this like clockwork for a reason. The bands call us. Our promoters call us. They're all just waiting. And we, we know what to do. We could pull it off in 30 days. If you tell us, we'd be ready the next month. So, but we, we thought we'd kind of gradually go up, starting smaller and then hopefully we'll get there. But do remember that we are, we would love it if everybody who's out there that wants these events and all the people who are saying that they want us to do this, it would really be nice if all of those people would become members. It's $150 a year. And for that, I mean, that doesn't even pay for the wine walk. And, but if everybody would join, then we'd be listening to you. And when our, when our emails go out that our secretary Reggie does, that she puts those, she puts out what we're doing to our members. But there's a lot of people who aren't members, but it doesn't mean we don't care about them. It doesn't mean we don't hand out pamphlets to them. Carol and I went down and as she said, and we spent a whole day handing out at the docks, telling them about the market that's coming. It's like this isn't their first time they've heard about it. And we tell people downtown. But if we had more people joining and more volunteers, it's going to take three times the amount of volunteers to put the wine walk on because of the COVID restrictions. We're going to have to have more stations, more people spreading out. So we will be, it'll be a little harder, but we're going to do it. So we're hoping that there is hope. I mean, we're, we're, we are going to do this first event and we're going to put it as a double event that day. And if we do really good and no one gets sick and we don't have any problems and everybody's happy, then we'll come back and we'll see what, what can we do next. Because we are ready and it isn't just the three of us. There are many members that we have and there are a lot of people who are supportive. And they do, we do hear from them and we do tell them what we're doing. But I know that if you're not a member, then I, I guess we're remiss in not knowing how to get it out to you. But that's why we did pass out at the docks, everything about our budget, everything about what's coming. But anytime anybody even that isn't a member, if they want to call any of us, they want to ask any question, they want to volunteer, we're ready. But yes, we are going to go forward.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could just follow up with the, I guess what, not just the businesses, but the residents
Yes.
are looking for some kind of a reassurance that these larger events, the Oktoberfest, the seafood fest, music fest.
Hope so. I mean, we're ready to do them.
Is there an issue with, with, and I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know when applications are normally submitted for these. But can people expect that you would be submitting for these as would be normally the case? And then begin the planning and let's see how it goes with regard to COVID?
We, we have been, it has been our understanding because of the COVID that if we, if we are ready to submit an application and that the environment allows us to put on a bigger event, that, that the city, that we will be able to submit that and it will go through really quickly.
I, I guess what I'm getting at is if, if.
You mean, you want us to put it in now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, when you normally would for Oktoberfest, for example, or hippie fest or whatever, and then plan the larger, there's an expectation or anticipation with a larger event. And as time goes on, hopefully we'll have that larger event. But I think the issue is, at least in my talking to people, one of the problems is, is this, it's kind of like the glass half full, glass half empty. In other words, we look at it as a glass half empty. We're not going to do anything until we can be reassured that we're going to do the event. And other people look at it as a glass half full, that let's plan on that we are going to have the event and then we can scale back if we need to.
We are planning on doing the events. I mean, in our mind, we are certainly hoping that nothing's going to change. I mean, we would really like to be able to do the big events, particularly when we get to the hippie fest, hippie fest. And, and we are ready to put our applications in. And our secretary is ready and she can put them all in at the same time.
That's all you had to say. You're ready to put the applications in and, and at the appropriate time as if it's going to be a full up event?
You don't have to, you, all you'd have to do is just say we can do it, we would be fine. But we have to be ready. The environment has to be ready. So we're going to start with this very first thing and then go from there.
The issue Ms. Went is that the city manager doesn't know any more than you do whether we're ready. I'm looking at as a very, I'm sure the commission's looking at it as very optimistic that we are going to be ready. We'd love to have them. And, and we just want to plan on having them is what I'm getting at. I think that's the sentiment up here. I'm hoping that's the sentiment. I would, that's at least what I'm hearing.
Either Reggie or Carol, do you have an exact timeframe?
Again, I think we're, I think they're saying, Sherri, I think what they're saying is the regular time you would put them in like we talked about.
Yes.
Then we will put them in and have the contingencies on them.
Yes.
At the regular time when they normally go in.
Can you say that again, city manager without the mask on? Thank you.
At the regular time, all those events
Would normally.
that are going forward during the year at that regular time, the plans are for them to put them in at that time. And we will have the contingencies of adjusting how we have to do for the times.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
They told us we'll go right through.
And what I would like to ask you is, after you have the event, if you get with Mr. Licorice and evaluate that event and see what we learned from that.
Well, I hope we're going to learn that it's great and that we had no problems.
We always do that. We, we do that normally. So.
Do that anyway. Okay, great.
But we always do that over time.
Thank you, Ms. Went. Thanks very much.
Okay, we have a motion for 13A. In roll call, please.
Mayor, just before you do that, I just want to make absolutely clear, I'm sorry. The, the recommendation that it was coming from you from, in the memo picks up June 12th. And I just want to make sure, because it's not mentioned in your agenda, that June 12th is included too. So that's a, that doesn't become an issue later. You can see that it jumps from May to July, but the recommendation also includes June 12th. I want to make sure that the motion includes that because I think the motion was just the ones that are on the agenda.
I'll, I'm in the motion to include that.
The application says June.
Correct. But the, but the agenda does not. And I just want to make sure that the recommendation in your staffing is to include it. The application is to include it, but it's just not listed out under A.
Okay. Are you going to include that?
Yes.
In the second?
Second.
Second, okay. And roll call, please. I'd like to ask the audience to turn their cell phones off, please, or put in a vibrator. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Need a motion for the 13B?
Motion approved. Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Do we have any other comments on item number C, 13C? Which is the general discussion on special events? Anything that you'd like to add? Okay, we don't need to vote on that. So I want to thank the merchant associations and every, everyone, all the businesses in town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, point of privilege.
We like to, we're going to take five minutes recess.
Point of privilege, please. Can we do this next item and then Sergeant Miller's here with his young child? If we could get number four.
I'm sorry, who?
Sergeant Miller, who's representing the union is here with his young child. If we can do number 14 and then take a brief break.
Okay.
If we can, if, if, is the courtesy?
Okay, that'd be good.
Thank you.
The item number 14 is ratified memorandum of understanding with the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association staff report.
Jane Niffen should be on Zoom. If you could bring her in. Go ahead, Jane.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and the Board of Commissioners, Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm going to try to be as brief in my comments as we were in negotiations. The documents you have in front of you or in your package represent, it's a memorandum of understanding which represents a tentative agreement between the cities and the unions negotiating committees. It has already been ratified by the Suncoast PBA. It covers the last two years of a three-year agreement which started October 1st of, of 2020 and will expire September 30th of 2023. The only reopeners for years two and three were for wages, hence the, the list was brief. We had a total of three meetings, the first of which the committee spoke in generalities. We asked the, the union committee of their thoughts for years two and three. And their committee responded and clearly articulated that the actual agency was not very competitive in the number of steps in the actual pay plan. For example, a, a brand new officer comes in at the entry level. After a year, they move to year one. And then finally they progress year by year through the step plan until they reach maximum at step 20. Not as competitive or, or probably one of the, the longest in, in our area. The second major point that they made was that if we should contemplate reducing the number of years to max, then the people who are currently at max or about to be at max may be monetarily disadvantaged. And this would involve a lot of their long-term loyal employees. So there was a request to address that. We met again and the document that's in front of you represents the final hammered out agreement. I'd like to go over it very briefly, starting with what's going to happen this coming October. The entry level will, for both officers and sergeants, will be increased by 3%. Subsequently, all steps for officers, the spread between the steps will be 2.25%. And for sergeants, it will be 2%. The major reduction is in steps from 20 to 18. Year two, I shouldn't say year two, it's actually year three of the, of the three-year contract, which would start October of 2022. The entry level would again increase, but this time by 2%. And all steps for both officers and sergeants would have a two and a half percent spread. Then the steps will subsequently be reduced now to 17. The last thing that we had considered and had agreed to was the fact that we have, this coming October, we'll have four long-tenured employees that are at max. And under this plan, under the, any other plan and this plan in, in, in fact, would be compressed from 20 to 17 with possibly no increase. So we agreed to the consideration of 2% lump sum payment based on their base annual salary to be paid over the first four months of the fiscal year as long, as long as they remain employed. This October would be four employees, next October would be five. And the caveat is that they would get this in each of those two years, except for that fifth employee who will only top out in October of 22. And that in a nutshell is, is the synopsis of the agreement.
Thank you.
Mayor, point of order. I, I think I referred to Sergeant Lemmons as Sergeant Miller and I want to apologize in my haste to get your attention. So it's Sergeant Lemmons.
I was trying to see who was Sergeant Miller here. So, okay.
Lemon, you're talking.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We're going to go to public comments. Do we have a representative here from the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association, Sergeant Miller? Sergeant Lemon.
Sorry, Mayor, I put that in your head.
Sergeant Lemon, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Sergeant Lemon with Tarpon Springs Police Department. I represent the Suncoast PBA. I'd like to start by expressing our appreciation on behalf of our membership, behalf of the union to Chief Young, former Chief Cochran, city manager of the chorus and his representatives. We engaged the city very, very, very early this year to, to start this process, to try to come to an agreement for the wage reopeners in both 2022 and 2023. Those conversations were very productive. The result of that agreement is something that I think will allow us to take another step forward to ensuring that our police department remains competitive on a salary and benefits standpoint with the surrounding agencies. That's incredibly important to not only be able to recruit the most qualified, diverse applicants that this area has, but also to retain those officers that we invest so much time, money and energy into training and that those officers have developed relationships with the, the local businesses, the citizens. The last one we want is the citizens of this, this town to be interacting with an officer one year and then a year later being, interacting with a completely different officer. I think the, the value in making sure that we have contracts and salaries and benefits that are competitive with surrounding agencies is that those citizens of our community are going to be able to deal with the same officer year and year again, and the sort of value that that brings.
Sergeant Lemon, excuse me.
Yeah.
Can you look at the baby for a second? Make sure he's all right.
Yeah, he's good. It's all right.
Okay.
I brought a three-year-old to this meeting.
All right, thank you.
Baby shark can only.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Continue.
Somebody's going to take care of your son, Sergeant Lemmons. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, I think the the value in that is is something that is immeasurable. And I I think the way that our department has has developed under Chief Cochin's reign and now Chief Young is a place that officers want to stay at. And I think that this contract that we're putting into place, this agreement, is is going to take a giant step to ensuring that from a salary and benefit standpoint, that nobody wants to leave because I think everything else that this city brings to the table already ensures that officers don't want to leave. And so, like I said, I just want to again express my appreciation for the process and dealing with the city representatives to make sure this agreement came into place. So, thank you.
Sergeant Lemon, our understanding is you had a vote with the membership and was in favor.
Yeah, it was resoundingly in favor.
Thank you.
He's he's okay.
We're going to go to our public comments on this item. Do you have anybody, anyone who wishes to speak on this item? You're none? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do you have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk.
The chair will detain the motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
I I just like to say that I'm glad that we have an agreement with the Police Association, and it's a satisfactory to both parties. Again, I want to thank all the police officers for the services that you're providing to the residents of Tarpon Springs. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we've talked a lot about this in past meetings, about the union agreement and salaries, et cetera. So I don't have a whole lot more to add, other than I'm happy to support our police department in any way we can. Thank you.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
I just echo the Vice Mayor's comments, happy to support the PD, and I'm glad that we came to a logical agreement for everybody. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Sun Coast PBA for their efforts and professionalism. They've been so awesome to work with, and I'm happy to support anything for our PD. So happy to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we got an early start on this and got it resolved early. I think that's going to take a lot of advanced questions out of the policeman's mind and certainly let him relax a little bit in terms of their salary. I I I I guess we're going to be doing this open, another letter or memorandum, I think, on the for twenty-two fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three, and then the renewal completely on fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. I'm just glad we got it done.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Maryland, who's this?
Yes, we're now going to take five minutes recess.
Thank you, Mayor.
We now reconvene our DOC meeting at nine oh five PM. The next item on the agenda is number fifteen, the award IFB number twenty-one zero one zero two, utilities rehabilitation and construction services rebid. Staff report, Mr. La Courice.
Mr. Paul Smith will give this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This item is for the award of a utility rehabilitation and construction contract to three contractors. It's part of a competitive bid process. We've used this type of contract mechanism for at least the last five years to have resources in place for emergency repairs and also for small to mid-sized utilities, construction projects. We are recommending an annual authorization not to exceed $750,000 total based on past project costs and our budget allocations. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Smith, we're going to go to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments on this item? You're none? Ms. Jacobs, do we have any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Commission comments. Mr. Smith, appreciate the discussion that we had the other day. I thought that was very, very affirmative. I think it makes sense to have three contractors on standby for emergency and small projects. And it's something that you try before it any works, so I'm supporting that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Carr?
I've got no comments, Mayor.
Commission Tera Pani?
No comments, Mayor.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the detailed backup here. My only question is just trying to get a better gauge of how the three contractors are going to work on on different projects. Like, is there a chance that, you know, two of them are going to show up for one or two when we work on the same thing? How does that work?
Usually, we go to them one at a time on a rotation-type basis. It isn't formal, but the idea is that one will do one project, and then for the next project, we'll work with another one so that they all get relatively equal share of opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
It's first chance of availability, I would hope. In other words, if you've got an emergency, you go to one, and if he's not, until you figure out which one will come. Is that correct?
That's correct, but also for the other use of mid-to-small-sized projects, it would be on a rotation basis.
Right, no, I understand that. And and the people that are in Palm Harbor, sorry, West Palm Beach, that that I mean, are they going to have local crews here? I'm not sure how I could understand how from the East Coast to the West Coast, that would be on a project that would might be worth their while. Is that correct?
Yes, we'd want to coordinate that in advance and make sure as a condition of that work order that they can provide.
Get in and get out.
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Maryland, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We go to item number sixteen, which is the award file number twenty-one zero one twenty-seven, purchase of an ambient music systems for the Sponge Docks.
Usually, she's behind the scenes, but our IT director Suzanne Lynn is here to come to the microphone about the sound system at the docks.
Hello, Suzanne Linton, your information technology director. Pleased to bring this to you today. I hope you all had the opportunity to go and look at the speakers that we had as a test. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're here none? Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone online online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commission comments. Well, I I saw the speakers. I was actually there with Mike and Mark, where they were doing the the testing. I thought that was good. The the sound is nice, is good, and the selection of music that they provide is also very good and relaxing. So and I'm glad because this idea, it came from the merchants many, many years ago. And I'm sure that Commissioner Vaticiatus will remember, was actually a conduit in place there to do that back then because the merchants wanted it. For some reason, it was never happened, but I'm glad that it happens now, and and I'm sure that they'll be satisfied. Thank you for all that.
Thank you. And Mike Races is the one who picked out the music. He he did a combination from all the islands.
I know that. He 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 did an excellent job collecting the, you know, selecting the music, too. And Boss did an excellent job doing the testing and make sure, find the proper locations for the speakers.
That was Mark Jump. He did a fantastic job.
They both worked together so well.
Very well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, thank you. For the record, what's the goal to have them installed by?
Um, well, once we get approval and we get back to the guy who is aeronautics, we have to acquire the equipment, so I'm going to say probably two months.
Okay.
It shouldn't be too, too long, but it'll depend on Public Works also what their schedule is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tera Pani, any comments, questions?
No, no real comments, Mayor. I'd just say that it's a long time coming, and I'm appreciative for staff for what they did regarding the music and the selection of the equipment. And I'm also appreciative to see in the back of that these amplification, the amplification will be installed by city staff. So, thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank our whole IT team. They're the best in the business, and, you know, this is another fun projects that I'm excited to see move forward. My only question is just for individual speakers. You know, if I'm a restaurant or business down there and I'm having a a live music event or something like that, why be able to turn down or request for a turn down? How is that going to work?
We will be able to turn them off.
Okay.
And they can request it on a schedule, but we can't turn down individual speakers. So we can turn them off, so they'll just have to notify us in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
I think on that note, I I want to just, I I met with Ms. Linton and and Mr. Races and Mr. Jump at the Sponge Docks and did a walkthrough, and I can, just in case any issue comes up, they were very good at talking to all the restaurants and businesses to ask them whether they wanted music in front of their business. So we're, the the city, Ms. Linton and the staff are very sensitive to that. So I think, and then the other aspect of it, it is going to be a trial, not a trial and error. It's a little too harsh, but basically, they're going to go up, and there may be some adjustments that are going to have to be made after they're up for a variety of different reasons as well. So I very much appreciate the approach that was taken. I very much appreciate the the way that professional help was brought in long distance with good information to help you design the system. And and I know Mr. Races with the Hasapico, the Calamet, you know, the Susta, the Sierdosen. I said they'll all be good music. So and you know, there was some discussion of whether they're actually island music. And and when you do the research, it's it's Pan-Hellenic. But nevertheless, what I pointed out to this person, it is the Greek songs and the type of dances I grew up with in Tarpon Springs. Not whether they're island or not, they are what we grew up with. So they are Tarpon Springs, and I very much appreciate the research on that, too. So thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Maryland, who's this?
Yes, thank you, Suzanne. Next is item number seventeen, to authorize solemnment of code enforcement liens of four thirty-eight Riverside Drive. I will ask the city attorney to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a request for authorization to accept an offer of settlement on two outstanding code enforcement liens on the property located at four thirty-eight Riverside Drive. I had received a inquiry from a local attorney, Mr. Michael Driss, on behalf of his client, Michael Magros. I hope I pronounced that correctly. He is a potential purchaser of this property located at four thirty-eight Riverside Drive. After some discussion and going over the outstanding cases on the property, the attorney made an offer on behalf of his client to settle the two code enforcement liens for a total sum of $5,000. The outstanding amount due is approximately $13,000. It's my understanding that if this is acceptable, it will be paid, and then this property, this proposed property owner will be purchasing the property. So it's important to accept the offer to, in order for the property to be sold and move this project along in the rehab of this property, I guess, is what is happening. So I'm asking for your authorization to accept the offer of $5,000.
So I'm asking for your authorization to accept the offer of $5,000 for the two liens, which total at this point, $12,928.61.
Thank you. You still agree with having staff report on that?
None, none for me. We agree.
Okay.
We agree with the recommendation.
We go into the public comments of this item. If anybody has any public comments, please come forward. We see none. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do you have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And now we're going to commission comments. Well, I, I support the recommendation of the city attorney to, to accept the settlement. But, you know, I think the $5,000 fine for parking a recreation vehicle in a residential areas, I think it's too, too much. It's kind too extreme. I will recommend $2,000 instead of five. Vice Mayor Carr.
I, I do agree that there's a decent fine for parking a vehicle in there, but they're a repeat offender. And the attorney brought the offer, so I'm happy to support what our attorney is recommending tonight.
You go with 5,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commission Terapen.
I support the motion.
Commission Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I would support the original motion as well for 5,000, just given the fact that their representation are the ones that propose this offer.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the city attorney. This is not Mr. Mugro's violation. This was the former owner or the current owner that is selling his house to Mr. Mugro.
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, I, I agree with you as far as a reduced fine. However, I, I think this was negotiated in the way it was. And, and it looks like there's three votes already for the $5,000. So I'll just let it go with the 5,000, but I understand completely what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I see that to be a little bit too much for.
Yeah, and it wasn't Mr. Mugro's doing. I want to make sure that that's clear.
It doesn't have to be. I don't care who the person is.
Just for people.
For anyone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Mary Alhuzis.
Yes. We go to item number 18, which is to authorize a settlement of code enforcement liens for 1739 Meadow Oak Lane. City Attorney, please present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a memorandum asking for your authorization to accept a settlement offer of $6,000 from the current owner of this property located at 1739 Meadow Oak Lane. The property is actually owned by a huge corporation. And it's listed on the property appraisers records as 2018-3 IH Borrower LLP. So it's a big company. I had received a request for information about settling the lien from, I guess, one of their representatives. They call themselves Invitation Homes. And the Invitation Homes person I was speaking to, Brittany Ecker, has the authority to speak on behalf of the property owner. They understand that the outstanding liens on this property is $13,098.33. And I received by way of email and letter from Invitation Homes that they were willing to offer $6,000 to settle the outstanding code enforcement lien. I am suggesting that we, that you accept that $6,000 offer so I can go ahead and prepare and release that lien. The, the lien itself is a direct result of the company installing a fence without a permit. They were well aware of it. They took a significant amount of time to apply for the permit. And that's how the fine got as high as it did. The property owner understands that they're blaming it on their contractor, GCLS Contracting Company. But ultimately, they made the offer at $6,000 instead of the $13,098 lien. So I'm asking for your authority to accept that offer.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none. Do we have any emails, Ms. Jacobs?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any commission comments, Vice Mayor? Commission Terapen, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Commission Donovan, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
I just want, I, I tried to get to the bottom of that as well. Is it a rental home? Not short term or anything like that. Do you think it's a rental in that inventory or?
I, I assume it's a rental home.
Just because of the nature of the ownership.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know for a fact, though. I just assumed.
That was my question. When you say there was a huge corporation, is that, it was not a bank, was it?
No, it's not a bank, but it is a lending company.
Okay.
In the name of, it's 2018-3 IH Borrower LLP. It's based out of Dallas, Texas. And they've owned the property since July of 2018.
Thank you. Any other comments? You're none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Mary Alhuzis.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're now going to ordinance and resolutions. Item number 19 is the Resolution 2021-17, ratified executive orders. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2021-17, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order 2021-11 and extending the declaration of local state of emergency to March 23, 2021. Ratifying Executive Order 2021-12 and extending the declaration of local state of emergency to March 30, 2021. And providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-17 by title only.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? We hear none. Do we have any emails, Ms. Jacobs?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
Anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
Okay.
Bonnyartis School Yas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. The state of emergency at some points got it getting knocked away. It, it's a double standard and, like I said, a governor Gavin Newsom of California hypocrisy that we have these state of emergencies in order. Yet some of them of our city manager does not follow the protocols that he has set on his own people and his own businesses and special events in town. I think it's something that needs to be addressed at the end of the night regarding staff comments. And needs to be articulated in a very sensible way. And the board needs to decide what they need to do after because it's not right that we're having this do as I say, not as I do policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else online wishing to speak?
At this time, we do not have any other raised hands.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any commission comments, Vice Mayor?
Uh, no.
Commission Terapen, any comments?
No.
Commission Donovan?
No comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Nothing.
I don't have either. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Mary Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item 20, which is the Resolution 2021-15. This is the application 20-149, final plat, Carriage Homes on Ring Avenue by Joseph Kokolakis. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Yes, Mayor. Commissioners, this is Resolution number 2021-15, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving the final subdivision plat, application number 20-149, Carriage Homes on Ring, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-15 by title only.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have anything that you want to share with us?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, this is just the final plat for the Carriage Homes on Ring. You've probably seen this property under construction. It's 12 attached single family homes in two buildings, six each. There's no public utilities or anything that's, that we're accepting. And so we can allow them to go ahead and go to plat and then they can begin to market and sell the units. So we're recommending approval.
Thank you. We're going to public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item? You're none. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online wishing to speak?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
We're going to commission comments. The other thing I would like to say is to congratulate Mr. Kokolakis for this project. He's completing it on time and it's very efficient. And I do want to drive you by, I said, they're working. They are very, very efficient operations. So congratulations to them. Any comments, Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, echoing the same thing, Mayor. It's nice to see this development move along. It looks great from a development side. Looking forward to getting wrapped up and sold for more residents here in this area of downtown.
Thank you. Commission Terapen.
My only question for staff is, Renee, when you're looking at the plat, the track B, that is by choice going to be like a drive aisle or alleyway for this development?
It, it is. It's a, it's a combination access drainage and utility easement.
And that's going to be part of the homeowners association?
Yes.
And not, not maintained by the city?
Correct.
Gotcha. Yeah, other than that, I'd say it's a long time coming for this project and appreciative of the investment that Mr. Kokolakis is making and has made and hopefully will continue to make. So cheers to him and look forward to having new residents in our urban core. Thank you.
Commission Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Congrats to the developer. And it was funny, when I saw this agenda item, I didn't recognize it or remember approving the site plan. And then I looked at the backup and it was approved all the way back in January 2016. So it's been a long time coming. So congrats to them on, on getting this one done.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know was, I've spoken to Mr. Kokolakis and, and he had to wait till the time was right. But when the time was right, he has not wasted putting up those homes. So I very much appreciate that and minimal disruption to the city all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Terapen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes.
Mary Alhuzis.
Yes. Thank you. We are now going to the item 21, which is the Resolution 2021-16, Port Funding Initiative. And this item was placed on the agenda by Commissioner Vaticiotes. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2021-16, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, expressing strong support for the governor's port funding initiative as part of the federal relief allocations and urging the governor and the Florida State Legislature to restore funding for the Anclot River Extended Turning Basin Dredge Project by means of the port funding initiative and providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of Resolution 2021-16 by title only.
Thank you. Before we go to public comments, I would like to let you know that I've been talking to Congressman Gaspilakis. Now that EO mark procedure for the federal funding is back in Congress and the EO mark funds are to be spent on specific projects. Congressman Gaspilakis wants to submit all projects that we need to be doing here in Tarpon Springs. And I have asked Mr. Licorice to prepare a package of all the projects that we have. And I will give it to Congressman Gaspilakis to work on it. With that, I'd like to go to public comments. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item? You're none. Do we have any emails, Ms. Jacobs?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We go to commission comments. We start with Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This is in response to an email that Commissioner Charlie Justice sent us. And I don't have all the detail. He asked us to do this. And from my perspective, the early worm gets the, the worm. And it just gives the governor a little help to convince the Florida Legislature of how to distribute the funds. And, and we have a need and that's all we're saying, we're expressing that. Thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiotes, just so you know, we sent a thank you letter to Commissioner for letting us know.
Yeah.
We did.
You're going to.
We did that already.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yeah, I've got a question on section two of this. So I'm trying to understand because the extended turn basin was put in or appropriations request was submitted last year, fiscal year with the state. It was vetoed. Currently, there's an appropriations request and with the state this year. But this is asking that it be restored from last year's veto and means as a part of the governor's port funding initiative in the amount of 700 plus thousand dollars. Funding has been requested for fiscal year 21 and 22 as House Bill 2925. So I'm just trying to understand, are we, as a city, rescinding? Is this making a, a suggestion that we rescind the House bill? Because it's not clear in this because you're asking for port funding. And then as a city, are we clear on how the port funding is even available? I, I don't think section two is clear enough. And, and so I think that needs to be clarified further. Because if the funds are available in general funds for the turn basin, I mean, we should gladly be able to receive it, I think. But the port funding, I, I totally agree. Let's, let's get as much port funding as we can. But the state is going to require a dollar match of some sort, or I don't know exactly what that program is going to look like. I really think we should be going down the general funds route, the way the House bill is presented now. And then see what happens. And I mean, I'm, I'm good with the resolution. I think it makes sense. But I think section two needs to be clarified further before we send it off to the state representatives in Congress.
Okay. Well, in, in regards to the two projects, the attorney basing and the one on the Decanis Boulevard. Yes, the Speaker of the House is working with us on that. And this is the two bills that have been involved with. He had, he has Representative Ladvala. And also we have Senator Cooper that sponsored those bills. And yes, they are in process of doing that. And this is something else that it came about in regards to the port. And it was a member that it came and it's quite a bit of money actually that it goes to, to ports. So I think it's a good idea if we can get something, something out of it.
I, I agree. I just, the way it's written, it doesn't, I think we're missing the, like, I see that it's talking about the House bill that's currently in place today. But it talks about how we want it to be restored through the port funding initiative. To me, I think we should be careful in how it's labeled. If there's additional funds we could utilize for our current dredge project, but to say that we want it only for the port funding initiative and not necessarily general funds, if that's the, the way they take it. And if I'm reading it wrong, I mean, somebody else can let me know, but that, that's how, that's how it looks like it reads to me.
Commissioner Vaticiotes.
No, I was going to wait for my turn. I don't have any issue with putting any kind of clarified language in there that we're not rescinding any other requests. It's, and, and from the standpoint of the general funds, we're using our funds because that extended, unless I'm mistaken, we're using that funds because that other money that we were counting on did not come forward. And quite frankly, if, if we could free up. And quite frankly, if we could free up six hundred thousand and this commission would support, maybe looking at a disposal pond site, that would be great. If not, it could be used for something else. But to your point, Vice Mayor Carr, I don't have any issue with providing any kind. I would leave it to the city manager and his staff to make sure that that happens. I mean, I don't know that I want to do any wordsmithing this evening. But I would have my confidence in the city manager and his staff and the city attorney to make sure that that's taken care of. Is that all right, city manager, of course, with you, or?
What you're trying to say is some type of language like if it's not funded by the House Bill two nine two five, or?
That makes sense. I mean, that's the approach we would be going after, right? Going after port funding.
Yeah, this isn't a grant application. You know, I think the real impetus, and I spoke to the city manager about this before we did this, was the fact that all that money that the governor's talking about is likely going to go to the larger ports, Tampa, Jacksonville, Everglades, Miami. And if you look at, if you look at what is going on with their ports, they're not going through any different than what we are in trying to obtain funding. I just, with these hurricanes that come through and all these major emergencies, flooding emergencies in the southeast and things like that, all that funding is going to emergency response. And all the maintenance stuff is being put on the back burner. And whether we get help out of this COVID contingency or allocation, hopefully somebody else will. But it's not, it's just a way of this little city kind of roaring a little bit, saying that I think the governor's on the right track of using this money for ports that otherwise that maintenance dredging isn't going to get done because the Army Corps isn't supporting that either. So.
Would it be easy enough to do, be restored by funding has been requested in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-three in House bill? Or, or as part of the governor's port funding initiative?
Yeah, I mean, that would address it. Yeah, both ways. So, I mean, I don't really care how it's worded ultimately, but I just, I just want to be careful.
You want to let them know the governor, or you want to let them know by the House bill that's been presented for us? Or this one, whichever one, that we'll take either one?
Yeah.
So. And you know, to that, a little further down the line, this resolution is nothing more than just a kind of a, how we feel about it. I'm sure if those funds do become available for ports, there's going to be some mechanism for making that request anyway. And that's when we get down to the nitty gritty of how we make that application. So I understand.
Yeah, I expect some kind of a criteria to go with it, qualifications and stuff like that. Right now, it's just more of an idea that they're presenting and hoping that it will materialize. Thank you. You know?
Yep.
But it's good to put, you know, the additional language. Mr. Licorice? I?
Good night for the comments.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm appreciative of the heads up from Charlie Justice and also that this item was placed on the agenda tonight. And I didn't want to interrupt y'all, but I think to somewhat to maybe a point, I think we should ask for more. I don't, I mean, in a two hundred and sixty million dollar initiative, you know, I think Tarpon Springs should roar more here. I mean, we should ask for the money that we initially asked for plus, in my opinion. So if you want to award it one way or another, that's fine by me. I think I understood what the vice mayor was saying. But I think we should ask for the seven twenty-four for the dredge and then more money for another aspect of our, of our port. I mean, after all, we know how much money in fish and jobs and recreation the port offers. So that would be my thinking. But I know that there will be additional criteria that will come back. But given that this is, the early bird gets the warm thing and an opportunity for us to roar, I think we should be asking for more money.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the Commissioner's heads up via email about it. I actually went back to look at some of Governor DeSantis's comments, just because I was curious, because I hadn't heard about it. And the majority of his comments after he made the port funding initiative clear, completely surrounded cruise ships. And it was all about the cruise industry. So, you know, I'm happy to go after any money possible. And I'm happy to support this, and I hope we get something out of it. I'm just a little concerned that he was more, you know, he was more so thinking about helping the cruise industry. But again, I mean, I'm okay with the rewording. I just, my only fear initially was that by saying, hey, we want some of this port funding, you know, it's designed to help people that were affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic, which obviously we were too. But I don't want to dwindle the fact that we've been asking for this money for years. And, you know, we need to help for this before COVID nineteen. So I'm happy with the rewording. And again, hopefully it gets funded some way, somehow. But I'm glad that there's some rewording in there, just to make it a little bit more clear that, hey, we're not asking this just because of COVID nineteen. We've been asking for this for years.
Thank you. Commissioner Atticures?
Yeah, no, I also wanted to point out that we got that information that the, I think it was the city manager sent us about the additional COVID stimulus money, the ten point six million dollars. That would be our share. That's still kind of playing out as far as how that's going to be done and what it can be used for.
No criteria yet.
Right. And to be honest with you, this two hundred and sixty million dollars may be part of that money as well. I have no idea. But the bottom line is that we're a waterfront community and anything that we can do to kind of express what our priorities are for the waterfront, I think that would help. So.
We all on the same page.
Right.
But we have a motion in a second. I'd like to modify the motion to include the rewarding that we're going to have.
I so agree to that amendment. And it would be to include the wording as the city manager stated. If you want to say that one more time, city manager for the city clerks.
Shall be restored. Shall be restored by funding that has been requested for the FY two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, but as House Bill two nine two five or as part of the governor's port funding initiative in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven fifty-three.
Second agrees?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I agree.
Good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. Item twenty-two is the resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen opposing SB, which is the Senate Bill five twenty-two and the House Bill two nineteen preempting local regulations of short-term rentals. See, Attorney, please read the resolution.
This is resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, opposing Florida Senate Bill five twenty-two and House Bill two nineteen that preempt the regulation of short-term rentals to the state and urging the Florida Legislature to restore local municipalities' ability to protect their communities from irresponsible short-term rental landlords. That was a reading of resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen by title only.
Thank you. Mr. Licorice, do you have a staff report on that?
I can, I can talk about that. That was another one of my ideas. City manager and I did talk about this before as well, before putting it up here. We've received a couple of different emails on this from the Florida League of Cities. And, and we kind of waited because we weren't sure whether the bill would get to the point which would merit a response from a city like ourselves. And it has. It cleared some panel and actually went to the Senate Ways and Means Committee yesterday. And I tried to get what the result of that was, but there wasn't anything reported on that. This bill, I'm sorry, this resolution has to do with the state's preemption of local home rule over establishing land development code guidelines as far as the short-term rentals, Airbnb and that sort of thing. And this is the sort of thing I've, I'm hoping at some point we can have a, as part of, I don't think it's got to be the whole work session, but as part of a work session, to get our arms around this, to get a better understanding of what is it that the city can do and what it can't. For example, an Airbnb could advertise a room where the people actually live in it and live in their home. There's not anything that we can do. There's also another circumstance that I'm very familiar with, that the people live in their home, but they advertise their entire home and that they leave when a renter comes in and they do something else. And so I don't know what we can do about that. And of course, there's the type of Airbnb which rents out the entire home, for example. And that is not allowed in any of the R zonings, but it is allowed in the special area plan, some of those areas with, through a conditional use that we've dealt with. So it's just to get a better handle on what these things are. And then this would be to support the maintaining our home rule over our ability to govern and administer where these things are going to be located in Tarpon Springs for the reasons that we did, we stated in the wherases. So that's it.
We go into public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item? Here none? Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody online wishing to speak?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay. The Chair will detain the motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Well, even though that I support short-term rentals in certain places, in certain places, I will support the resolution because the Senate Bill five twenty-two and the House Bill two nineteen is undermining our home rule. And also the Florida League of Series is much against that. So I support the resolution. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, I'm happy to support the resolution with some changes with the home rule situation. I totally agree with that. I think it's a good idea. Thank you for bringing this forward. But there's, there's whereas paragraphs number five, six, seven, and eight. I think those are just really widely used characteristics and not necessarily true. So I cannot support with those four wherases. So it would be whereas these bills would preempt the local governments from preventing the negative effects. It's the negative effects associated with short-term rentals. Not all short-term rentals, short-term rentals are negative. Such problems as safety, security, noise, trash, lawn, parking, et cetera. And that goes down to number eight. So the last one that I'm talking about would be the problems presented by short-term rentals are inherently local in nature that are best addressed with solutions approved by local affect offices. So actually, I take that back. That last one, I agree with. So it should be five, six, and seven. The seventh one is the characteristics of surrounding residential neighborhoods are altered by a frequent turnover of neighborhoods similar to a motel business. So those three, those three wherases, I don't think reflect what a short-term rental cases are. Those are like the worst case scenarios. But we also have worst case scenarios, right, where we have a property owner that doesn't do these things also. So I'm happy to support this. If we take out, like I said, paragraph five, six, and seven, other than that, I wouldn't be able to support it.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
I definitely see where the vice mayor's coming from. I mean, especially on, I think, number five, where it says, you know, where it talks about the negative effects. I mean, ordinarily, I wouldn't have read into it as, as much as he is here. But I do, I do think that, you know, in areas in town where short-term rentals are, I don't want to say encouraged, but I mean, certainly there's an area of our special area plan where that is a permitted use by right. In most of the special area plan, it is a conditional use approval, which we all, you know, know what that is. So I think in a community like Tarpon Springs, especially right now, where we do not have a hotel or, you know, traditional proper accommodations in and around the urban core, which is where everybody wants to be because of the walkability and what that area of town has to offer. I think that short-term rentals are providing a fantastic alternative and attracting a lot of tourism and that we ordinarily would not have. So I, for one, am thankful for them in the appropriate areas, of course. I want to be, you know, obviously clear on that. So I don't think that they are causing negative effects where they're allowed. I can understand where, you know, this is talking about in areas where it wouldn't be appropriate. But I do think that there is some negative connotation associated with a few of these wherases. And I'm happy to take, you know, a meeting to address that if the commission sees fit.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it sounds like we're all in support of this on the principle of home rule, which I am as well. I don't think there's much need to get cute with the wording for, you know, sections five, six, and seven. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up. Because it is just kind of three sections that just trash the generalities of short-term rentals. So I don't think there's any need to get cute with the wording. We can just take those out and leave it as is. So I would be, you know, I don't think I was the motion or the second. But I think it would just make sense to amend the motion just to remove the three whereas sections five, six, and seven.
Yeah.
Commissioner Atticures?
That's fine. I don't, the whole idea behind this resolution, by the way, I think I grabbed it from Temple Terrace. I think this was the resolution, whether it's a model resolution or they used it. This was another short notice thing that we put on Friday. And the main idea behind the resolution is, as the mayor said, it's home rule to preserve our home rule. And it's not to determine where the Airbnb, or I shouldn't say Airbnb, short-term rentals would go in town. I just think that we've got a lot, and quite frankly, it's, I think, from my perspective, it's more of an enforcement issue. As I mentioned, we've got somewhere from a hundred and sixty-eight to seven hundred and something short-term rentals by whatever that website defines them as, operating in Tarpon Springs. And I just would like to have a little better knowledge of where these are, what's going on, and maybe do something about it before they get out of hand. And if we, if this does get preempted, the home rule does get preempted, we're going to be extremely limited in being able to do anything at all. So again, I don't, I think, what'd you say, Vice Mayor Carr, five, six, and seven, or an eight?
Yes, yeah, five, six, and seven.
Five, six, seven? Yeah, I don't have a problem, amend my motion to remove.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it. But as I said, as I stated, that I support the short-term rentals in certain places. But my dilemma is to, the two, those two bills, the five twenty-two and the two nineteen, that is undermining the home rule.
Yeah.
And this is what the Florida League of Series is actually concerned about. I'm okay removing five, six, and seven. I'm okay with that if we modify the motion.
I so modified to eliminate paragraph five, six, and seven. Is that correct? Okay.
Six, seven.
The second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes. Okay, twenty-four AMB has been deferred. And now we're going to twenty-five homeless outreach update.
We need to do twenty-three, Mayor.
Twenty-three?
Up there staring at you.
Oh, yes, we did.
It says deferred on there for this.
Yeah, the, this is the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Adoption of building code changes. This is the second reading. It was deferred from March ninth, two thousand twenty-one regular session. Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, updating the references to the current versions of the technical codes in section six dash one and seven dash twelve of the Code of Ordinances, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for the effect of the disordinance. That was the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Licorice, do you have a staff report? Any new changes?
Yes, Mr. Powell is coming to us by Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Kevin Powell, Building Director. This is the second reading. This is just the acknowledgement to be in compliance with the state regarding the current building code and also the electrical code and the fire prevention code. And this is also updating the fire prevention code for their seventh edition. There's no additional changes to this. And any comments? I'm available.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item? Here none? Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, anybody online wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
Okay.
Onayotis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Thank you for coming up and speaking, Mr. Powell. We have discussed the last couple meetings about speeding up the application process for setup plans and other type of plans regarding the building department. I was hoping, are you sometime this year going to make a presentation or have city staff look into help turn all the format electronically into the building department? That way, we can speed up the process for our contractors. I would also like to see, or get some more information as to why we don't have a building official. I believe you're head of the building department, but there used to be a building official that was above that. If someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I would love to hear that. And as far as people using old documents that may or may not be fiction or nonfiction about buildings that did have living places upstairs that were never there before, we are going to look into all that. We're not going to change our zoning and structure prior to special area code plans and use false statements from past history to redo the apartments upstairs. So I just want to let you know, sir, we're going to be more diligent on doing things the right way in Tarpon Springs. And I'm looking forward to working with you and many others in the department. And if you do need more city staff to help speed up certain things in the department, let them know. And as I get more involved, let me know. We'll make sure we'll make this happen, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Jump, do you have anybody else online wishing to speak?
Another raised hand at this time, sir.
Okay. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Are there any commission comments? Vice Mayor Carr is right here. Commission Tera Pannie?
No comments, Mayor.
You said no comments.
Oh, no comments. Okay. Commission Donovan?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission Vadikias?
No.
Nothing. Okay. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have any comments on this item? No, I don't have either. And we have a motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikias?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tera Pannie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Item 25 is a homeless outreach update. Staff report?
Yes, as we told you, we would give you updates on our progress. So so introduce Chief Young to give us, give us that update.
Mayor Commissioners, thanks for having me tonight. City Manager asked me to come forward and talk to you about what we've done so far since the homeless Town Hall meeting that y'all had back in beginning of February. I think we did quite a bit in just over a short little, over a month since then. And I want to give credit to Ada and the Shepherd Center staff. She sat here in front of you and that audience that night. She took ownership of some issues and said she was willing to help and try to correct the issues around town. And I can say that the very next day, she started doing it. People from the Shepherd Center, volunteers, staff, as well as clients, were out in the community cleaning up and going around to the various businesses that were in here talking about the concerns they had. Ada also drafted two letters that I gave to you in backup, one she addressed to me, and one she addressed to business owners, which she went around delivering. Again, making promises that she'll hold people accountable for their actions that they're clients of theirs. And we did have a Zoom meeting like we talked about with stakeholders from the community. Commissioner Donovan was part of that as representative from the board. Ada and other staff members were on there. We had police department employees. And everybody was a very interactive conversation, given comments back and forth and direction and guidance for Ada and her policy development. And some issues came up there during that Zoom meeting. One of the big ones, Ada said she wanted to move the gazebo, but didn't have really a way of doing it. And I asked Sergeant Miller and Officer Boone if they could spearhead that challenge. And they took that head on and reached out to Brad Bradford at Bradford's towing. Brad, as you, everybody here knows Brad, he volunteered his services, brought his truck out there, another employee of his, and they moved that gazebo. And I don't know how many decades that thing had been standing there, but it's been a while. And he moved that thing without breaking a single board and got it back into a new position, a new home for it, back behind their area in the Hope Center, right adjacent with eight brand new benches that the Merchants Association paid for and delivered because Ada brought up that during the Zoom meeting, saying, hey, we would love to have our people on site eating, but we don't have an outdoor facility for them. And then the benches and tables, the Merchants Association stepped right up during that meeting and said, we'll make sure we get those for you. Those eight tables were there painted and ready before we ever got the gazebo back there. And that's what we were talking about, where the this community comes together to solve problems. And I think that was very evident on that day there. I know the mayor and commissioners, there was a few out there, city manager and others, Sun Coast News was out there. They did a nice piece on it. And I think we could be very proud as a community in Tarpon Springs, how everybody came together to help solve a problem. Other issues that came up and looking around there, trash cans were removed at one point in front of the arcade. City Manager told us, get right on that and get those back out there. And we got a few of those out there. We're working on getting more throughout the area there. Our homeless outreach team was asked to join the Tarpon Spring, Tarpon Springs Ministry Association on some Zoom meetings because they do talk about homeless issues on that. So our members are on involved with that. We have our analysts working on developing names and information Ada's requesting, so her staff can help address the issues. They're looking at progressive type of issues with helping somebody if they're doing something around town that's disturbing the community, they're going to address it with them, but and hold them accountable, then step it up the next time. Those policies Ada is going to be finalizing that. Hopefully, once those get done, we'll get those to you for you to look at and see see that. But overall, I could say, you know, nothing's perfect. It's not perfect out there, but I think we're in a far better place today as a community than we were the night of the Town Hall meeting.
Thank you for the update. We're going to go to public comments. Do we have anyone that wishing to speak on this item? See none. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir.
Onayotis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. Townsend, make sure you don't go nowhere after I get done speaking on this topic. Mr. Young, I want to say thank you so much for speaking. Your voice really calms the room. We are delighted to have you talk and represent us. And regarding this homeless outreach, I didn't speak at the special meeting regarding the homeless outreach. And I listened to, I listened to it all. And I was really disappointed why I didn't speak when, if I decide and want to be a leader in Tarpon Springs, we got to make a stance towards certain stuff. One thing I realized after listening to Ms. Delgeis, who I spoke to her, and after speaking to Robin Sanger personally, is that we can't force them to do anything. We acknowledge that they are growing, they are a growing facility and organization. And we must do our best communication possible to help them as they grow, potentially out of that spot that they're at right now, into another area in town that makes sense. We want to build our downtown over time. I truly believe that's one of, one of the main things that's stopping us from growing. But it is God's work that they are feeding people, taking care of them. I understand it makes our downtown look bad. But slowly, this is a process we're all going to work together. Now, as far as ending this conversation and chuckling about permits and illegal stuff being done, Mr. Tera Pannie, there is nothing to joke about. Those Coca-Cola lofts, you know exactly what I'm talking about. If you want to try to test us to proceed forward on other stuff like that, we sure can. So please take us seriously. Take my word very serious. And guess what? If every developer knew that they could buy buildings and switch the units upstairs from multiple, from two to eight units, well before the zoning allowed it, other people would be doing it too, and not just your buddies. So don't smirk when we're making serious comments, how you use your position on staff to take advantage versus this whole government. Thank you so much.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else online wishing to speak?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We go to commission comments. And again, Police Chief Young, thank you for the update, and thank you for all the work and appreciate the partnership and the cooperation that you receive from the stakeholders. And I'm very grateful to the Shepherd Center for providing for the for the needed. And Mrs. Delgeis, she's doing an excellent job and appreciate her efforts, too. And also, I wanted to thank our City Commissioner Donovan for representing the BOC. Can you tell us when you're going to have another update? How often do you actually going to meet with him to make sure that we continue?
We have, we have another Zoom meeting on April 8. I think Ada will give us an update on the policies and probably provide them for us then. I'll get those to you. And then after that, I'll probably scale back and probably do like a quarterly type of Zoom meeting just to refresh and get information out there as we need to.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, any comments?
Yeah, Chief, thanks for everything you're doing with this. Appreciate you taking our comments and the community's comments and moving forward with this and working with the Shepherd Center and the nonprofits here locally. Obviously, the police department has a large impact on this, what would I say, community as a whole. So thank you again for taking the lead with this and moving forward.
Thank you. Commission Tera Pannie?
Yeah, I'd just say thank you, Chief, to you and everybody else involved, including the Shepherd Center and the volunteer organizations. And I think I agree with you that today, we're in a better position than we were when we had our first outreach meeting. So thanks, Tom.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief Young, I know you won't take credit for it. But man, you did such a good job getting that focus group together, leading them, making sure there were tangible results at the end of the meeting. I know we've all been parts of focus groups before where, you know, we've clicked off Zoom or walked out of the building and been like, man, that was a waste of time. We didn't get anything done. We just talked and talked and talked. But that that focus group meeting was really just the opposite of that. There were tangible goals and results that were going to be expected at the next meeting. And I think we learned a lot. And I mean, even just little stuff, you know, one of the pastors there mentioned, hey, I don't have a list to go off of, of the people that are creating these nuisances. And I'd love to talk with them and work with them and maybe put in our own policies. So just little, little stuff like that, you figure out along the way. But Chief Young, you're doing a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to our next meeting.
Thank you. Looking forward to having you there, sir.
Thank you. Commission Vadikias, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd also like to thank Ms. Delgeis and the Shepherd Center and their staff. I know Fred Howard, personally, I grew up with him. We played baseball together. His name is on the sign at Sizzler Field for the All-Star team. Of course, you and the police department. I had an opportunity to speak to Sergeant Miller and Officer Boone that day when we moved the gazebo. That was a very, very nice event. Also, I spoke to the Merchants Association, Ms. Gibson and Ms. Rodriguez, and with the tables. And then Bradford, I actually got to meet him. So and Lowe's as well, who gave a discounted price for the picnic tables. And the one thing that 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 in talking to, I think it was Sergeant Miller, maybe been Officer Boone, but when we did the Town Hall, we kind of left, and I think you, and I'm hoping I don't put you in the spot. I know you know the answer, but it'd be important. We talked about establishing an incentive program. And the, I think what Sergeant Miller was telling me, Officer Boone, it's through cigarettes or some, some kind of an incentive to to I know that they were giving out some like coupons for going to grocery stores and stuff like that and giving them To be able to redeem those back at the Shepherd Center. Correct. Yeah, yeah. So we're moving ahead in that incentive program to to kind of incentivize that process of that. I don't want to call it behavior. It's just But it's when you recognize the individuals that are going above and beyond. They're doing it on their own. It's not us asking them to do anything. It's the clients that the Shepherd Center serve. And they're going out in the community. They're cleaning up themselves. They're doing things. How do we recognize that? And Officer Boone and Sergeant Miller came up with an idea. And they're they're running with that. And, you know, I think that's the important thing here. I do believe that this, all the stakeholders are doing their part. And it's going to take all of us. It's not going to, we're never going to solve this by arresting our way out of it. It's going to take the whole community, the, from the dice, you're not going to be able to make ordinances that are going to make this situation go away. But it's going to take the entire community all working together and having problem solving and work and getting it done. The area behind the Arcade Hotel is being patrolled on a regular basis by our own people that we help. And then also, the bus stop that seemed to be a sore point at the corner of West Court and Peninsula Avenue, that seems to have gotten cleaned up quite a bit as well. So I was happy to see that. And and also was happy to see that the people that need help have now seemed to be making a distinction between those from Tarpon Springs and those from elsewhere. And so it's like they've taken on an ownership role of this program. And they actually get after some of the people that come in from out of town that seem to kind of want to drop a can or a cup or something like that. So they actually get after them themselves rather than They're policing themselves. Yeah, that's great. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to item number 26, approval of interview recommendations for internal auditor and interview date. Staff report?
You have before you a letter from the Budget Advisory Committee at that meeting. Susan Hales, was Vice Chair who wrote this for you. They gave you there for choices that they thought you should go forward with the interview process. So it is now your decision now whether to to go with this list or add, subtract, or whatever the pleasure of the board to give us the final list to have Ms. Niffen start on the background investigation to move forward with. And that's part A of it. When you decide that, we'll talk about the data of the interviews.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Have we received any emails, Ms. Jacobs?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody Zoom wishing to speak?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir. Or we did. If you do want to talk, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in.
Onayotis Kuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm sure the board was well aware I was going to speak on this topic. And I was going to wait all night until I did again. You guys saw all what happened at the last Budget Advisory Committee, where Mr. Banther, who I did like, I did ask him about his past performances on this internal auditor position, and how certain people who are still running the city now, who are still staunch supporters on review committees, are help getting problems like this, going for 10 years now. So we want internal auditor. I'm worried that if we mess this up again, who are we going to play, who are we going to point the finger at? Is it going to be Mr. LaCorse, who's not doing the hiring? Or is it going to be Ms. Jane Niffen, who this is her second or third time around trying to lock this in? Let's look for somebody who's not going to have all these demands, who's going to want to work close to the city, who possibly doesn't mind living in the city, who's not going to be, you know, Mr. Banther brought up, this was a political tool being used last time. Well, the exact same opposite can be said now. This is a political tool being used for those who don't This is a political tool being used for those who don't want it. So let's do our best to get the job done. We never heard about how much money we're spending on this, on finding the best candidates. And just trying to think of anything else that I'd like to say before we end this. Let's make sure you guys make a specialist, a special session, a special session agenda night to interview these candidates. And please, let's get one soon, as soon as possible. The citizens should not be waiting any longer. Thank you.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else online?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We go into our commission comments. Well, Chair will detain a motion. Do we have a motion on the floor?
As far as the ranking goes.
Yeah, well, let me comment what I have to say. What I like to say on that is first, I would like to thank the Budget Advisory Committee for providing us the providers their recommendations. I graded all these applications using the criteria and the, the point system that they provided to us. And you know, I came with the same names, not the same ranking, but the same names. They're actually, the score pretty close. So what I like to see is all four of those people have the opportunity to give us an interview. And that way we can select a better one for this position. So I like to get, I like to have a motion to that effect.
I move to interview all four candidates that have been selected by the Budget Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Second.
And it'll go to, to comments. Vice Mayor Carr, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to set up the interviews next week. I don't think we need to wait three weeks to have the references called. So I think doing it either on the 30, 31st or the first of next week would be a good start to move forward, to wait, to wait another month to interview the, these candidates. I mean, they could be looking for jobs, they could be doing other things, they could get another job like we saw with other candidates in the last round. So I think moving this forward is going to be the best, the best approach sooner than, sooner than later. Thanks.
Commission Tara Pani?
Yeah, I, I support the four candidates as far as the app or the interview process. And probably sooner than later is a good idea, although I will be out of town on business on the first and second of next week. I will not be available in person.
Okay. Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree that the numerical order isn't a big deal to me. I'm happy to interview all four. And I mean, that's going to be the real, the real test. I'm checking my schedule right now as it pertains to next week. So I guess skip me from now. Once we start talking about a specific date, I'll come back into it.
Thank you. Commission, what you care is.
I asked the city manager some time ago not to schedule anything for this week coming up. And I could do it by Zoom, but I really don't like doing any kind of an interview by Zoom. I'd rather have some personal contact with that individual. And also for next week, I do know that, for example, and I had a question that I was going to bring up for Ms. Niffen, Ms. Sanders lives in Shelton, Washington. And I'm not sure exactly where that is. So that's, that's going to be a, from one end of the continental United States all the way to the other. And do we do an interview with Ms. Saunders Sanders by Zoom? Or would she be appearing or we need to ask her first? That's for a question for Ms. Niffen.
I believe you would need to ask her. We have done Zooms for long distance. We would have to make sure the room is set up properly so that you can actually view that candidate. The rest are local. I'm not sure she would be willing to come that far in person, but we can double check for you.
I, I would be okay with Zoom if the rest of the commission is. I, I don't know that. I mean, she's at least from the Budget Advisory Person, the first one on the list. And, and I'm not sure that's the case with all the commissioners and I hate for her to come all that way. And, and that evening find out that maybe she doesn't get selected, I guess, if, if that's how we're going to do it. The, so that would be okay. But, but next week I would, go ahead, see, Manager Lacorius.
I just want to note, because I was going to talk about this later, but this is a good time to talk about it. You had reserved April 6th for a possible work session. We had hoped to have Kevin Powell with his stuff in the building and the fees and stuff, but he is not going to be ready on the 6th for that. So I was going to bring you of other things we could do on that work session, but that's a date you've already got reserved. And that is a date, if you want to move those interviews up and we just get whatever back if we can. All of you have pretty much committed and that date is, that date would be available to do that special session for your interviews as opposed to the work session, because we won't be ready to go on, on that topic, which is what I was going to recommend that we go on that work session on. Mr. Powell needs a little more time. So April 6th would probably be the earliest possible date to, to go with if you want to go with an earlier date.
Mr. Lacorius, I would like to have that as early as possible, but you know, providing that the applicants will be available to be interviewed.
Well, again, that'll give us two weeks notice also.
So I think we're all on the same page. Just let us know. I'm okay with that.
The week of April, April 1st is, is a, is that a Friday, I believe?
Thursday.
Thursday? I'll be back. Well, no, it won't be.
April 6th is Tuesday, if you do.
April 1st is a Tuesday?
April 6th, the one I suggested.
Which would be the following week.
Yes, which is the following week because we knew the
I mean, I, I don't have an issue doing it Zoom. I just would prefer to, and Ms. Sanders is going to be Zoom too, so I'm not sure how that may work out. But perhaps, and we don't even, and I would suspect that the candidates locally are going to be available as well. So I, I'll defer to the rest of the commission how you want to do that. I mean, I obviously, whatever the commission wants to do from a convenience perspective. But, but I would, since this is a very important position, I would like some consideration be given that that be allowed to do it in person.
And again, that would be two weeks for us to give notice for the candidates to prepare and be ready for the meeting. If we did the 6th, the Tuesday, the 6th.
Okay. Commission Donovan?
Yeah, I'm just confused. Are you going to be in town on April 6th?
Asking you, you're going to be in town April, April, April 6th?
On, on April 6th, will you be in town or will it be over Zoom for you if it's the 6th?
On the 6th, I'll be in town.
Okay, the, the 6th works for me as well. Yeah, that's, that's a Tuesday.
That we thinking of.
That he suggested, so.
I had, I'd worked all these dates out with the city manager ahead of time, including April 6th, so.
Okay, yeah, April 6th works for him. It works for me as well, so.
Yeah, so April 6th will be the day providing that the applicants are be available to have the interviews.
Can I ask just a question? I, I think we already decided this, but maybe because of the two weeks, would there be any benefit to we, was the security background check or whatever? Would there be a benefit of doing that between now and those interviews as well? And that way, if, if there's a problem, it's going to knock one of them off the list rather than
Yeah.
Yes, we will begin that right away and hopefully have some results by then. We will start that first thing in the morning.
Okay. Well, it seems like we have consensus, but you know, I'd rather have a motion. Makes it more clear.
We still have a motion on the floor.
Updated, right? It's going to be an updated motion.
I, I'll amend my motion to interview the four candidates selected by the Budget Advisory Committee on a meeting of April 6th.
Second.
A roll call.
Mr. Vaticius?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to our staff comments.
No comments.
Chief Young?
No comments, sir.
Mr. Trask?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Lacorius?
No, sir.
Ms. Jacobs?
No comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No comments.
Okay. Commission Tara Pani?
No comments, sir.
Commission Donovan?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Commission, what you care is.
I, I do want to kind of get on with determining other dates as well for other work sessions and town hall meetings. For example, the, the Hoppin Property, Hoppin and Sun Bay. We need to have some, the, the budget is, we're in the process, I'm sure, directions have already been given to the departments. And I think it's incumbent on us to do a little bit of our legwork as well prior to getting to the point where we start making inputs of the budget. The town hall meeting for the, the parcel we just purchased and also the Sun Bay motel, I think is important. And then a couple of the work sessions, in addition to Mr. Powell's local amendments. It, we were going to be talking about the revision of the fees. And, and also at that time, I had asked maybe that would be an appropriate time to talk about these short-term rentals at that time as well. And then there was another town or work session that we needed to do. And it just escapes me right now, but there was one more that was fairly important as well that we needed to do. I wish I had written it down, but, but I, I know the city manager is, is kind of represented that he's going to have to get that from us. And I, I would like for that to happen sooner than later, just because of, as I said, I don't want to get caught flat footed on the, on, on the budgeting process. So. Oh, the salary reviews. And, and that, that was the other one that's very important that you've been asking for that, Mayor. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thursday, March 25th. Our Greek American community and all the Greeks all over the world will be celebrating the Greek Independence Day and the 200 year of anniversary. That was when the, the Greece, that was when Greece regained the freedom and independence and democracy was restored to the both place. This year, due to the COVID-19, we were not going to have a, the Greek Independence Parade as we have every year. But the celebration will take place in St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral to honor the Greek Independence Day and the 200 year anniversary. We placed spotlights to shine the, the cultural center with colors of the Greek flag, blue and white. I recommend that you pass by at night and you're going to see it. It looks very beautiful. And I want to thank our staff, Mr. Lacorius, and our staff for, for doing that on behalf of the Greek community. Thank you so much. With that.
Mayor, the, will there be a proclamation? Will you do a proclamation for them?
Which will be presented in the church.
Yeah.
Well, that concludes the regular session meeting. It's adjourned at 10:28 PM. Now we go into the CRA. And I'll call to order the meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 10:29 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Chair LaHoozus?
Here.
Vice Chair Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Tara Pani?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vaticius?
Here. Okay, the only item that we have on the agenda is to approve the final Forbes property agreement. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present this item?
Yes, Mayor. When we last left off on the discussion about the ground lease with Denami Holdings LLC, there were a couple of changes that needed to be made to the lease agreement that were discussed at that meeting. And I want to go over those changes. First of all, there was clear direction from the commission that you were not interested in addressing and adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment relating to the floor area ratio change. So that was deleted from the agreement. That was on page two of the lease. In the commencement date paragraph, we also changed that to reflect that the city was actually going to transfer the six, the equivalent of six residential units to the property. Obviously, that's another step that we'll have to do if this agreement is acceptable to the commission. In addition to that change, there was a discussion about the developers' concern about not getting the $7,500 credit until certain timeframe had been met. That was deleted. Do you remember that there was an incentive that they would get the $75 credit against building fees? If they completed the project within 24 months. We took out that language. So basically, we now that they're going to get that credit once the job is completed. And there's no incentive to do it within 24 months. The next change dealt with the delays, possible delays in the project. And we revised that paragraph to reflect that if there were additional delays, it is a direct result of the review, permit review process that, that would allow additional days to be added for the completion to the 30-month chronology that we had already talked about. Lastly, there was a discussion relative to who is going to pay for the title insurance on the property. And I revised the agreement to reflect that the city is going to pay for the title insurance. On the day after the last meeting, I provided these changes to Ms. Cole. My understanding, she immediately provided them to her clients. We did not get a response to any of those changes until today at 1:24 PM. Just like the last time, we don't hear until the deadline. But the email that I received from Ms. Cole, and I believe that she's on Zoom today, if you want to, if you have questions. She emailed the city manager and I during the meeting that she was available on Zoom. But in a, she's telling us that her clients are willing to, to sign this agreement with one additional change. And the additional change is, is that, and I'm just going to read the paragraph to you. As this is a lease, there is not the standard due diligence time period and allowance for termination by the purchaser. We would like to include a provision that allows the tenant purchaser to terminate without penalty and that the parties be released from their obligations. I'd suggest that it be a time period that includes the time between the effectiveness of the agreement through 90 days after the commencement date. If the city is good with such a provision, Denami is ready to execute. So that is the status of the agreement. I've made the changes that you've requested. And now there's one additional change. If that's acceptable, then I will make that change as well. And we'll get the lease signed if it's otherwise approved by and authorized by you as the commission.
Mr. Trask, what's your legal opinion on the request on the addition?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I, I think that these due diligence type things are always allowed in purchasing real property. And this is a little bit different than a normal vacant lot because there had been a structure there, it had been demolished and it's having to work within certain confines. So I don't necessarily have a problem with some due diligence period. I'm not sure that 90 days, you know, is necessary. Because we've been talking about this property since July of last year. If there were any issues with regard to this property, they would have, I have assumed already determined that. And I will tell you that very early on in the process, we gave them permission to do whatever type of boring that they wanted to do on the property and give them that authorization. And they've had that authorization for well over six months. So but my opinion is, is giving them a due diligence period is, is an acceptable term. The question is, is whether or not that you want to give them 90 days to do that. And let me tell you when that 90 days would begin to run. The lease would be signed, we would go through the transfer of density process here at the commission. And once you approve that transfer of density here at the commission level, a month or two months down the road, that's when the 90 days will begin to run. Because that's when the trigger is, the transfer.
If you're going to compromise, what, how many days will you be suggesting?
I would suggest 30 to 45 days.
45, 30 to 45?
But I don't want that to be the deal killer here. So and I can't get any answer out of these developers for the life of me. We've been working on this for now, since July of last year. Nine months to get to this point. I'm very, very frustrated. You could probably figure that out.
Thank you. Ms. Cole, are you online?
I'll log in.
Oh, love her, Em. Ms. Cole, are you there? Ms. Cole, can you hear us at this point?
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us, Ms. Cole?
Hello?
Good to hear you.
Kitty, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay. When you were asking me if you could hear me, I didn't know if you could, okay. Um, yes, Mr., I don't know where we dropped off, but Mr. Trask did recap this, um, correctly. And at a final review, um, my client did offer, um, that they were acceptable of this agreement. They did ask for that termination provision after, um, kind of getting ready to sign. We realized, per Mr. Trask, uh, comments, that because it's formatted as a lease, that standard due diligence isn't, um. Part of the contract, which would be important, just because if. In the time period where the city is going through the transfer of density. Um, and my clients finalizing their plans, um, they do want to have that ability to terminate without having to come back to the commission. Um, they have done, uh, certain testing and due diligence already on the real property. Um, but there's obviously, uh, additional due diligence and pricing, um, necessary from an actual construction standpoint. So, um, to the mayor's request, if, if you would like, if that time period needs to be forty-five days. Um, that, that would be acceptable to my client, so if that, uh, that would be fine. And again, to confirm that the soil testing was already performed, and so much of the due diligence is completed. It's really about locking in, um, contractors' pricing, the, uh. Making sure all of the architectural details are necessary to quickly obtain approval from all of the necessary city boards. So, um, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, we're gonna go to, uh, public comments, we'll be back if we have any questions, can you stay online?
I certainly will, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? We hear none. Ms. Jacobs, any emails?
No emails.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone is online who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir. And we have a phone caller, nine four two.
Hello?
Yes, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Peter Delakis, five one four, Ashland Avenue. Again, I will address this board as the CRA. And not providing the public information. I'm home now, I click on the link, which I had done before. Yet there's nothing that comes up, and at the last CRA meeting, I mentioned the fact that, uh, y'all have had contracts and all kinds of. Backup, and yet the public does not have that, we don't know what you're doing. Now I hear the attorney saying it's a lease, where here it says in the agenda, approval of final Forbes' property agreement. To my understanding, previously it was a sale, now it's a lease? Come on, you need to inform the public about what y'all are doing. We're in the blind, how can we rationally and, and logically and intelligently? Give you advice or comment on this if we don't know what the hell y'all are agreeing on? This is ridiculous, and I will now, again, call up that on the next Charter Revision Commission meetings. That they bring up to take the CRA to be an independent board. You can have one commissioner on that board, but the rest need to be public citizens. And in independent fashion making these decisions, because y'all wasted two million dollars. On the Hoffman property, the Sun Bay Hotel, the Hoffman lease. And yet you could have used that money towards a Florida Communities Trust grant and gotten seventy-four acres instead. So start putting the stuff out in the public, so we can see what y'all are doing. When y'all are hiding behind the hats of a CRA, which gives you more leeway and privileges than the charter allows you. And follow the charter, even though you're wearing a different hat, you should still be following the charter of Tarpon Springs. And put the information out to the public, and also, as I've said before. Put a backup out in the lobby, put a hand sanitizer there, and let's start informing the public, which y'all are considering. Looking at and deciding on, thank you.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
You do have another race handle, allow them in.
Bonnie Otis Puyas, five nine five, Peninsula Avenue. I wanted to help, uh, touch up on the internal auditor position real fast. Make sure that you guys change these rules to vote.
Right now, sir, sir, we talking about, uh, the CRA.
Do the background checks before the interviews, thank you.
Bye-bye. Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We go to, uh, commission comments and, uh, the chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve the contract, um, as described by the, uh, city attorney. And amended or suggested amendment by the mayor of a forty-five-day due diligence period. Um, and for the record, that, uh, was stated by Ms. Cole as being acceptable to the, uh, to the applicant.
Second.
Do we have any, uh, commission comments, Vice Mayor Carr?
No comments.
Commission Tara Paddy?
No comments.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I know I said my piece last meeting about us being a little bit more firm in the negotiations, but. I'm looking forward to seeing this done and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiatus?
I think we're done.
You're done, okay, me too. So, um, we have a motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Penny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carr?
Yes.
Chair LaHoozus?
Yes, well, that concludes the CRA meeting. And go to, uh, staff comments, Chief.
No comments.
Mr. Trask?
Go for the comments, thank you.
Mr. LaCour?
No, sir.
Ms. Jacobs?
No comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Do we need to extend the meeting?
Unknown.
Okay. No comments.
Okay. Commission Tara Paddy?
No comments.
Commission Donovan?
No, it's Mayor, thank you.
Commission Vaticiatus?
Nothing, thank you.
I don't have any comments either, well, that concludes the CRA meeting, it's adjourned at ten forty-four PM. We didn't have.